Thank you, everyone, for your patience. This is COVID time, I'll tell you. You have to be prepared, difficulties may happen. My name's Diane Howard, Mayor of Redwood City, and I'm calling the meeting to order. Good evening, and thank you for tuning in to our virtual City Council meeting tonight as we continue to follow public health guidance to avoid the spread of COVID-19. As a reminder, items will be taken in the order they are listed on the agenda. Before we get started, I wanted to briefly go over the public comment procedures for this meeting. All public comment on the consent calendar items on matters of council interest and items not on tonight's agenda will be taken at one time during item number five. Comments on other agenda items will be taken only when that item is called. You may use the raise hand feature on Zoom to speak. If you're joining the teleconference by phone, you may raise your hand by dialing star nine and star six to unmute your microphone when prompted. Please only raise your hand at the time that the item on which you are speaking is called. Each speaker is allotted three minutes, but that time may be adjusted if there are a large number of speakers. Council members Aguirre, Bain, Borgans, Hale, and Ready, Vice Mayor Mazur, and myself will participate by teleconference pursuant to Governor Newsom's executive order N-29-20. The city council chambers will not be open to the public. The meeting is being broadcast live to Redwood City residents on a stown broadband cable, channel 26, and Comcast cable, channel 27, AT&amp;T U-verse, channel 99, and we're streamed live via the city's website at www redwoodcity.org. I would now like to ask the city clerk to call the roll.
Good evening. We'll start with Councilmember Aguirre.
Here.
Councilmember Bain.
Here.
Councilmember Borgans.
Here.
Councilmember Hale.
Here.
Councilmember Ready.
Here.
And Vice Mayor Mazur.
Here.
And Mayor Howard.
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'd now like to ask Councilmember Hale if she would lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Thank you, Mayor. Please join me in virtually saluting on a flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
And to the republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, Councilmember Hale. Now, before we proceed to the items on the agenda, I'd like you to look at your screen because the city council would like to wish Rita Brooks a very happy birthday. Rita celebrated her 101st birthday last Friday. Several of us went over and honked our horns and greeted and wished her a happy birthday. And we asked her the secret to long life, and she said, "Good wine." So remember that. She also said, "I want to live to be 102." So we have a date with Rita next year to go to her house and do the same and sing her happy birthday. Happy birthday, Rita. Now, moving on to item number four. This is a presentation and acknowledgements. And this is a portion of our meeting where we recognize members of our community, local organizations, and city partners for the great work and services they are providing to the Redwood City community. As the city council is receiving information and not taking action, there is no public comment for this item. For A, we'll be swearing in our newly appointed boards, committee, and commission members for Architectural Advisory Committee, the Arts Commission, the Board of Building Review, the Board of Port Commissioners, Planning Commission, and the Senior Affairs Commission. Now, we will be swearing in the new members to the Arts Commission, and these were appointed at our meeting on October 6. I'm sorry. I think I'll turn this over to our city clerk at this moment so that she can handle this.
Thank you, Mayor Howard. Before we swear in our newly appointed or reappointed commissioners, we wanted to introduce them to everybody. And we'll start with the Arts Commission. And we have Sandra Keely, Ashley Quintana, Carol Shonert, and Anna Westendorf. Next is our Board of Building Review. We have Nick Barilick, Chu Chang, and Wayne Weep. Our Board of Port Commissioners, we have Richard Dickclaire, Ralph Garcia, and Loryana Castro. For our Planning Commission, we have Kevin Bondono and Elmer Martinez Zabaos. For our Senior Affairs Commission, we have Barbara Richkey, Hal Drager, Barb Valley, Debbie Ojeda, and Dr. Timothy Puri. And then, appointed by the Planning Commission at their meeting on October 6, are members of the Architectural Advisory Committee, Mark Finiger and John Stewart. And at this time, I'm going to ask all of the BCC members who have joined our meeting to unmute your mics. I'll give you a couple of seconds. And it's my honor to administer to you the oath of office. We'll do it as we practiced. Please raise your right hand. Although, we can't see you, we are going to ask you to raise your right hand for the oath. And then, repeat after me. I, please state your name.
I, Loryana Castro.
To solemnly swear that I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California
The Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance to the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California. That I take this obligation freely without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion and that I will well and faithfully discharge the duties upon which I am about to enter. Congratulations to everyone.
Thank you.
I'd like to echo that. Congratulations to each and every one of you, and thank you so much for offering to serve your city. We really appreciate your sacrifice. Thank you. And thank you for being with us this evening. Moving on now to item number five, public comment on the consent calendar and on items not on the agenda. At this time, we will take public comment items that are on the consent calendar on matters of council interest and on items not on the agenda. If you wish to make public comment at this time, please click the raise hand button on Zoom to be recognized by the mayor. If you're joining by phone, press star nine to raise your hand and star six to unmute yourself when prompted to speak. In order to see how many speakers we have for general public comment, I would ask that everyone who wishes to speak on a consent calendar item, matters of council interest, or an item not on the agenda, please raise your hand now. At this time, I see 13 speakers. Anyone wishing to speak on this item, if you could raise your hand now. I have 13 speakers. No, 11? 12? 13? And it looks like my last speaker is Ann Burl Yafa. So we will...
Excuse me, Madam Mayor. This is Jody Paley, and I do not have the raise hand feature because I think I was put in under the BCC. So, sorry to interrupt.
That's okay. So we have 14 speakers. And Ms. Paley, how about if I make you the last speaker then, okay? Do you mind?
Nope.
Okay, so the last speaker will be Jody Paley, and there will be no more public comment taken after Jody Paley speaks. Each speaker will be given three minutes to speak. And I will call your names in the order that hands were raised, two at a time. The timer will begin when you begin speaking. It is okay for your comments to be brief, and it is okay to state that you agree with the previous speaker. So we will begin now with Lisa Hicks Dumansky, and then Tony Capostioni.
Thank you. My name is Lisa Hicks Dumansky, and I am the Executive Director of the Redwood City Library Foundation. And I am calling tonight to speak on behalf of one of our community partners, Premia. Premia is a very generous donor to the library and also a patron to the library. Mike Hallow often brings his, or what did before COVID, his two children to the library, and so we saw a lot of him. But we've also had a long partnership with Premia to support the library's programs, especially the bridging the digital divide program. And we're very grateful for that. And I'm calling on behalf of his project that is up for review.
Excuse me, Lisa.
Yes?
If you're speaking about a project that's coming up, you'll need to wait till we address the gatekeeper process.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, these are for items that are not on the agenda. Okay? I'm sorry.
What's the agenda number that? So I can keep posted.
It would be 8A.
8A, okay, thank you. Stay tuned.
You're welcome. That's okay. My next speaker, Tony Capostioni, and then Pat III. Or 3RD.
Thank you, Mayor. I love the way you say my name with the Italian, Capostioni, but I'm also known as Tony Gopastone. I am from Bravemaker, the Bravemaker Film Fest, and just wanted to communicate to all the council how much I appreciate all your work you do for our city. I wanted to invite you to consider going to our website, bravemaker.com, to register for our e-newsletter because we are doing every week, we are having discussions around justice, diversity, and inclusion, especially racial justice. As you all know how important it is for us to talk about things like Black Lives Matter and raising awareness. We are hosting these events. They're free, online, every week. And we are very grateful for the support from Redwood City to do this work, especially since COVID has reverted all of our work online. We're no longer able to do our film screenings and panel discussions that we were doing for the past couple of years downtown. But one of the big things I'd love you all to be aware of is thanks to the Chan Zuckerberg Initiative as well as the Redwood City Arts Commission that has given us grant. We are producing a documentary series called Redwood City Stories that are communicating the real-life experiences of people of color in Redwood City and how they are becoming anti-racist. So I would love you all to go to our website, bravemaker.com, and make sure you sign up for it. It's a free newsletter. You'll get all these other cool links to free movies, but we really want you all to know about this production that is in the works. And when it's finalized, come 2021, if you're on our newsletter, you will see all of these faces that you'll recognize, right, from our own community. So I'd really appreciate that support. Again, I'm Tony Gopastone, or Capostioni, from Bravemaker and Bravemaker Film Fest. And our whole mission is to use the arts to inspire justice, diversity, and inclusion. That's bravemaker.com. Thanks again for your time. I'm Tony Gopastone.
Thank you so much, Tony. Bravemaker.com, thank you. Pat IIIRD, and then Maria Stockton.
Hi. First, I'd like to thank the mayor. She would announce the names of the city staff members who are attending so we'd know who's listening to us outside of the council members themselves. I want to thank the council, and I want to also thank the city manager for working on the pilot program to include mental health professionals. Not sure whether the Stanford professor is doing primary research because the slides that were given out last week seem to be secondhand. I attended today a conference where the people from the Santa Barbara County people talked about their five-month-long duration so far pilot program. I heard a couple of things that were interesting. One is that the mental health professional is in the car with an officer, and that car is unmarked without all the usual lights and bumpers that can push vehicles out of the way and shotguns sticking up in the window and all this. The officer is not wearing the full regalia of bulletproof vests and police and bright gigantic neon letters and so forth. There wasn't the mention of a, what our chief suggested, police officer securing the scene before a mental health worker can go in and talk to the person. This, of course, would be, obviously, the mental health person is not carrying a weapon with them. And while this team of basically casual-dressed police officer and the mental health worker, when they weren't on a call, they were going about town, checking in with people who had scheduled mental health sessions at the local mental health facility but didn't show up. So they're asking these people to, "Oh, you didn't show up? Is everything okay? And would you like to go? And can we drive you over there?" And this sort of thing. So I just wanted to share more detail about that information as it seemed confusing amongst the city council members and the chief police how this is supposed to work. Thank you again.
Thank you, Pat. Maria Stockton, and then Mark Wolahan.
Hi. I'm sorry, but I cannot find the agenda, and I am so sorry. I'm probably with the other young lady that would like to talk in regards to the building of staff housing in Redwood City.
Yes, that would be item 8A, I believe, the gatekeeper project analysis.
Okay, thank you. I'll wait till then. Thank you.
You're welcome, no problem. Mark Wolahan, and then Anita Menriquez.
Hi, thank you. My name's Mark Wolahan. I'm running for Redwood City Council, District 7. Growing up in a small rented duplex in Redwood City, I had to share a room with my dad. As a result, I often watched political segments. This adolescent exposure to the world of adulthood and society, to the financial, social, and political systems that work in it incited an early and lasting inclination to politics. Politics, policies can only be as pure or flawed as the people who shape them. Consequently, I am motivated to serve my community with a holistic perspective, equity, and accountability. After graduating from Occidental College, the same school Barack Obama attended, as a dual-sport athlete, I returned full-time to the Rikers Center for Human Enhancement, a 501(c)(3) nonprofit. At the Rikers Center, I've had the privilege of working with students from all walks of life in athletic fitness, creative arts, nature awareness, and community service, where I've had to do whatever in the spirit of helping others. Last year, I played professional basketball in El Salvador, another improbable experience realized through unwavering work ethic, which also helped broaden my perspective. After reflection during quarantine and feeling the outrage in response to the murder of George Floyd, I decided to run for city council. In these unprecedented times of resounding socio-political turbulence, exorbitant rent costs, and the closures of local businesses due to financial adversity, it is imperative that the candidates we elect to restore our communities come with the level of perspective and the vitality with which to do so. A candidate with the social consciousness required to respond to the novel needs and nuanced issues of a rapidly changing world. A candidate who is able to listen to the diverse, multi-generational range of voices of our communities. A candidate whose motivation stems from a desire, not simply to maintain the systems in place, but to evolve them. My campaign is purely grassroots and self-funded. Everything you see associated with my campaign is a direct reflection of me. I know the history of the city, and I have a vision for its future. I really want this opportunity to serve the community. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mark. Anita Menriquez, and then Brandon Henriquez. My next speaker, while we're trying to get a hold of Anita, my next speaker would be Brandon Henriquez. Can you unmute yourself, Brandon? There you go.
Yes, hello. Can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
Hi, my name is Brandon. I'm a resident of Redwood City, and I'm speaking on behalf of the Silicon Valley Democratic Socialists of America. SBDSA condemns the racist, dismissive, and insensitive statements made by members of the Redwood City Council, including by Councilmember Diana Ready, Councilmember Ian Bain, and Mayor Diane Howard. In response to widespread public calls to defund the police, these members of the council have made a series of comments that show not only a lack of basic understanding of these issues, but indicate a pattern of disregarding and actively disparaging community members who came forward to share the concerns. Most recently, on the October 5 special study session on racial equity and policing, Councilmember Ready joined Councilmember Bain in claiming that members of our community calling Freddie Scorpion and defunding the police were, quote, "mostly white." Councilmember Bain told community members who came forward that they should, quote, "speak for yourself and let everyone else speak for themselves." It is clear the council members were making broad assumptions and racially profiling public commentators and ignoring the fact that roughly half of listening session attendees, like myself, were non-white. Councilmember Ready expressed her thankfulness that this is, quote, "not Minneapolis or Louisville." She went on to praise the, quote, "mostly white residents of the city" for speaking up. Councilmember Ready and Mayor Howard took the opportunity to both to praise a white supremacist rally that was held on September 25 for being, quote-unquote, "peaceful" and to slander the anti-racist counter protesters who were targeted by police at the same event. The rest of the city council let these statements pass without comments, making the entire council complicit in letting these statements pass without being called out. Regrettably, SBDSA endorsed Councilmember Ready in her 2018 race, based in part on her claim at the time that she supports the Movement for Black Lives platform, a claim she has repeatedly proven to be false. SBDSA's endorsement is not a box of check. We expect our elected officials to live up to the claims and promises they make, and we pledge to hold them accountable when they fail. As a first step in readdressing this harm, SBDSA calls on Ready and the rest of the council to immediately take on following actions. Issue a public apology for the racist statements and dismissal of public concerns. Introduce a proposal to move Redwood City to a participatory budgeting system starting in 2021 so the public can have a direct input on how the city spends its funds. Among other steps for accountability that will be published along with the letter with full details on our concerns for Diana Ready, Ian Bain, Mayor Howard's, and the council's complicity to racism. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Clara Jackal. And then Carol Markey. Clara, you wait... Oh, there you go. There you go. You're unmuted.
Great, thank you. Yeah, so thank you for the opportunity to speak. I wanted to say thank you for adding equity as a foundational guiding principle in the strategic plan. I'm not sure of a separate comment for that item, but I just wanted to begin with that. I also would like to respond to comments from last week's listening session. In the discussion of the PCRC report, it was mentioned that many people at the sessions voiced concerns about inequity in housing and food security, first and foremost. And I wanted to say that it's exactly for that reason that I and others with similar calls have been calling for defunding the police, precisely in order to have more city funds available to invest in the community, both for longer-term affordable housing projects and for emergency rent and food support during crisis situations like the pandemic. The city will have more resources to respond to those needs if that money is not tied up and the police is a full third of the budget. And also, not that this is a one-to-one with the direct recipients, but in general, across the board, when the community's basic needs are met, crime rates will also drop. So I very much applaud and support prioritizing housing and food security in response to listening session feedback. Thank you.
Thank you. Carol Markey, and then Jody Paley. Carol, can you unmute yourself?
Hi. Good evening. My name is Carol Marke. I'm speaking on Agenda Item 8A, so I don't know if I need to wait.
Yes, I'm afraid so. It'll be under Item 8A. We'll be there soon, I promise. Thank you, though. My last speaker is Jody Paley.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, council staff, and everybody in Redwood City. I am here tonight to speak about Chase the Chill. This will be our fifth year doing a Chase the Chill event with a huge amount of support from Chris Beth and the Parks and Rec Department. For those who haven't heard of us, we collect handmade items. Every item gets a tag that says, "I don't belong to anybody. If you like me, take me. Or if you need me, take me." We started out the first year with scarves, then we added hats, socks, and gloves. And this year, we're also adding homemade masks. The collection bins are now up. So what we are asking, because of the pandemic, we've had a number of changes. So we ask that you place each mask, if you're going to donate those, in its own small Ziploc bag, and then combine all of your items into a single large bag or more than one bag is what I saw today that had been picked up.[1628.94] And again, because of the pandemic, our drop-off sites or collection sites have also changed. So this year, we're collecting at the Community Activities Building, and the bin should be outside the main doors during business hours. At the Veterans Memorial Senior Center during the lunch pickup, so from 11:00 to 1:00, you're welcome to drive through the pickup line and drop your bags, or you can park your car and get out and walk to wherever the bin is that day. The same at the Fair Oaks Senior Center, also from 11:00 to 1:00, and both of these are Monday through Friday. And the only caveat I want to add to those is that sometimes everybody picks up their lunches by 12:00, 12:30, and they may close the lines down early. So if you can get there towards the beginning part, it's probably a safer bet that the bins will be available for you to drop your items off. At the Main Library, Derek has been a huge help as well. And so for the Main Library, all you have to do is place your bagged items into the book drop-off. And then Derek's staff will pick them up, and I will be able to go into the lobby to catch everything. And finally, this year, we have a new site. Kaiser Hospital on Veterans is helping us, and they have a bin located inside the Marshall Court entrance. So those of you who are Kaiser members and may want to go by there, that's a great place for you to carry things with you. The only other thing I would say is you can find us on Facebook at Chase the Chill RWC. So that's it. And thank you again to everyone in the community for all your help over these years.
And thank you, Jody, for doing this every year. I can't believe it's that time again. My goodness. I hope every, I hope we get a lot of new participants. It's a really wonderful thing to do. Thank you, Jody. I wanted to mention to the speaker that we seem to lose, Anita. Anita, it sounds like you can't get in. So I would suggest you send us an email. And the email address you can send would be mine, and I'll make sure that the full council gets your email. That's dhoward@redwoodcity.org. And next time, you might just use your telephone to call in, and that might be easier. I'm sorry it didn't work out this evening. Thank you all for your comments. And at this time, all speakers can stay on the Zoom call or continue to follow the meeting through the live broadcast, either on the city's website at www redwoodcity.org or on cable television on local Channel 26, Comcast Channel 27, or AT&amp;T U-verse Channel 99. We're moving on now. Item number six, the Consent Calendar. These are items on the consent calendar that are routine in nature and are approved in one motion. I will be recusing myself from two items. Item 6L, which is rejecting all bids for Veterans Memorial Building and the Senior Center project because I serve as a volunteer on the Board of the YMCA, which is a partner on this project. And Item 6F, the final acceptance of Redwood Creek Revetment Project at Bradford Street because the project could impact the Sequoia Hotel, and I have a continuing source of income that owns shares in the hotel. However, on September 30th, 2020, my husband and I were fully repaid for our sale of those shares in 2018, and this will no longer be a source of income 12 months thereafter. Councilmember Ready will be recused from voting on Item 6K. So I'd like to ask if we could have a motion and a second to approve all items on the consent calendar except Items 6F, 6K, and 6L by roll call vote.
Ready? Seconded.
Okay, Councilmember Ready and Councilmember Aguirre. A roll call vote, please.
We'll start with Councilmember Aguirre.
Yes.
Councilmember Bain.
Yes.
Councilmember Borkins.
Yes.
Councilmember Hale.
Yes.
Councilmember Ready.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Mazur.
Yes.
And Mayor Howard.
Yes.
The motion passes unanimously.
The next action is Item 6K, and Councilmember Ready will be recused. So I'd like to get a motion and a second to approve Item 6.
Before we do that, have Councilmember Ready state her conflict before we take the motion. Have Councilmember Ready state what her conflict is.
I'm sorry. Councilmember Ready, I'd like to give you time. You're recused from voting on Item 6K. I'd like to give you the opportunity to say why you will be recusing yourself.
Thank you, Mayor. Items, this item has to do with the Hopkins, what are we talking, traffic calming. And I live in close proximity to this area. So I, that's why it's necessary for me to recuse myself.
Thank you. So I'd like to have a motion and a second to approve Item 6K. Motion made.
Seconded.
By Councilmember Hale. And a second.
Motion made by Borkins, seconded by Hale. That's right.
Okay. I'm sorry, Councilmember Borkins and seconded by Councilmember Hale. Could we have a roll call vote, please?
Yes. We'll start with Councilmember Bain.
Yes.
Councilmember Borkins.
Yes.
Councilmember Hale.
Yes.
Councilmember Aguirre.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Mazur.
Yes.
And Mayor Howard.
Yes.
The motion passes with six votes with Councilmember Ready recused.
Thank you. Now, I will be recused from Items 6F and 6L. I'd like to ask Vice Mayor Mazur if she would like to take the motion and the second and follow through with the vote.
Yes, happy to do so. So looking for a motion and a second on Items 6F and 6L. Councilmember Aguirre, was that you moving?
Seconded.
Okay, and seconded by Bain. Okay, City Clerk, could please take the roll call vote?
Yes. Let's start with Councilmember Borkins.
Yes.
Councilmember Hale.
Yes.
Councilmember Ready.
Yes.
Councilmember Aguirre.
Yes.
Councilmember Bain.
Yes.
And Vice Mayor Mazur.
Yes.
The motion passes with six votes, and Mayor Howard is recused.
Thank you very much. I'd now like to read all the items that we have just approved. Amendment Number Three to Agreement with HDL for Business License Tax and Transit Occupancy Tax, or TOT, Software and Services as Part of the City's Enterprise Resource Planning Replacement Project. amend the Financing and Information Technology Services Agreement between the City and Silicon Valley Clean Water, formerly South Bayside Systems Authority. Update on the Status of Utility Late Payments and Rate Assistance Usage and Consideration of a Six-Month Extension of the Late Payment Penalty Waiver. Agreement for On-Call Economic Analysis Planning Services with Strategic Economics Incorporated. Award 2019, 2020 Water Main Replacement Project, South Dale Way and Marsh Road. Final Acceptance of Redwood Creek Revetment Project at Bradford Street. Final Acceptance of Rule 20 Middlefield Road Phase One Underground Utility District Project. Final Acceptance of Sanitary Sewer Pump Station Improvements Project, PS Number 18 and PS Number 20. Final Acceptance of Winslow Street, Bradford Street, and Allerton Street Pedestrian Enhancements Project. Grant Application and Project Approval for San Mateo County Transportation Authority's Pedestrian and Bicycle Program, Roosevelt Avenue Pilot Traffic Calming and Implementation, and El Camino Real Corridor Safety Improvements. Grant Application and Project Approval for San Mateo County Transportation Authority's Pedestrian and Bicycle Program, Hopkins Avenue Traffic Safety Implementation. Reject All Bids for Veterans Memorial Building, Senior Center Project. Stormwater Treatment Measures Maintenance Agreement for 350 Gunter Lane with Heron Court Cooperative, Incorporated. Affordable Housing Regulatory Agreement for 37 Affordable Units at 1 Franklin Street, the Cardinal Apartments. Addendum to the Loan Agreement with HIP Housing Development Corporation for Acquisition and Preservation of Seven Affordable Housing Units at 1512 Stafford Street. Approve Arts Commission's Fiscal Year 2020/2021 Funding Recommendations for Large Grants. amend Number Two to Agreement with the County of San Mateo for Information and Referral Services at the Fair Oaks Community Center. Resolution of the City Council Authorizing an Additional $220,000 in Fiscal Year 2020/2021 Park Impact Fees for the Magical Bridge Playground Project. Approval of Commercial Permit Parking Ordinance. Approve Minutes of September 21st, 2020 and October 5th, 2020 City Council Meetings and Approve Claims and Checks from October 12th, 2020 through October 26th, 2020, and the Usual and Necessary Payments through October 26th, 2020. Moving on now to Item Number Seven. Items from City Council Subcommittee. Item 7A, Add Equity as a Foundational Guiding Principle in the City's Strategic Plan. Members of the Strategic Plan Ad-Hoc Committee, Vice Mayor Mazur, Councilmembers Aguirre, and Hale will give a presentation. Vice Mayor Mazur, would you like to start?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Appreciate the time to be able to present a brief update on our strategic plan per the guidance of our council. So if I could have this, the first slide, please. There we go. This is just a reminder of the actions we've taken to date that earlier this year, we adopted our strategic plan. We, in our August offsite, we agreed to address equity and add that to our strategic plan in some fashion. And earlier in August, we had adopted a resolution declaring that Black Lives Matter and reaffirming our commitment to racial equity. And then more recently, just last month, the ad hoc committee met. We reviewed our plan and guiding principles and are bringing forth a recommendation from that. And so with that, I think I'm turning it over to Councilmember Aguirre.
Thank you. If we could go to the next slide. This is just a reminder. These are our vision and mission statements and our strategic priorities and our guiding principles. And I'm not going to read them, but these are just a reminder. And going on to the next one, this is how we've always broken these down as far as aesthetics, communication, community building, economic vitality, and excellence in government operations. And then moving on to the next one. The next slide. I'm sorry.
I believe that's me.
Yeah, I'm sorry. It went a little bit faster. The last, if we can go back one slide, thank you. These are our guiding principles, a healthy community for all ages, housing, public safety, sustainability, and transportation. And this is just a reminder, we've gone over these before. But we use these as we were forming our Equity Over Plan that is the umbrella for all of this. And I believe I'm turning this over now to Councilmember Hale.
Thank you. So our committee met and discussed how could we best incorporate equity into the strategic plan after hearing direction from the entire council. We decided to recommend it as a new foundational guiding principle that would be the basis for all activities in the strategic plan. Our committee agreed on the importance of taking a fresh look at city policies from the lens of equity. And so this is the recommended guiding principle. Next slide, please. So if council agrees with the approach that we've taken, staff will develop actions to implement this decision over the course of the year by creating an equity work plan, as we discussed at our last meeting. This would likely include discussion amongst the council and training for staff and activities that would be considered as a part of the budget process. Next slide. And so for your discussion, we have the recommended action and motion to ratify or add this foundational guiding principle into our city's strategic plan. And that concludes our presentation.
Thank you so much. That was excellent. I'd like to ask council if they have any questions of the Subcommittee? Excuse me, of the Ad-Hoc Committee?
Madam Mayor, I don't have a question, but I do have a thanks. This is amazing. Thank you. And I know you did a deep dive into what our strategic plan and strategic initiatives are. And adding this is absolutely the right direction for our city to be taking. So thank you for this request.
Thank you. I was going to agree with you. I'd like to thank our Ad-Hoc Committee for the wonderful work they've done. Vice Mayor Mazur, Councilmember Aguirre, and Hale, thank you so very much. I really appreciate your presentation and the work that you've done to include equity and make it a core consideration in all of our city activities moving forward. Now, I'd like to take public comment on this item. In order to see how many speakers we have, I ask that everyone who wishes to speak on this item, please raise your hand now. It seems I have five speakers. Six? I have six speakers at this time. And the last speaker, speaker, excuse me, is Nisha Masharani. And at this time, I would ask if you wouldn't mind keeping it to two minutes. If you go over a little bit, that would be fine, but we have a big meeting tonight. So if it's possible, I'd appreciate if you could keep your comments to two minutes. My first speaker is Call-In User 3 and then Pat3RD. Call-In User ID, can you unmute yourself, please? There you go. Hello?
Hello?
Hello? Go ahead. We can hear you.
I'm sorry, this is Gita Dev. I meant, I wrongly raised my hand. I apologize.
Oh, okay.
I'll raise it later, Item 8. I didn't know how to unraise it. Sorry.
No problem. We're all learning. My next speaker is Pat3RD and then Amanda Doherty.
Well, I wanted to thank the City Council members, the team of three who volunteered to update the equity or the founding principle of equity in everything we do. I'd also want to thank the mayor for providing quotes in the last couple of meetings about or from Justice Ruth Ginsburg. I'd also like to ask that being there's racial equity in everything we do, would like to hear some pithy quotes from John Lewis, Latina activist Alicia Dickerson Montagnayor, and Japanese internment camp resister Fred Korematsu, who, by the way, was born and raised in the Bay Area. Thank you again, and keep up the good work.
Thank you very much. Amanda Doherty and then Nisha Masharani.
Hi, good evening. Thank you for allowing me to speak. Thank you so much for making equity a guiding principle for our city. Thank you also for formulating this equity work plan, which, if adhered to, I feel really optimistic about. In that spirit, I'd like to just say two things. First, just to acknowledge that today is Indigenous Peoples' Day. And second, I also, I agree with the commenter from earlier, Brandon Henriquez, who was saying that, you know, some problematic comments were made at the last meeting. And I have to agree, but I know that we're all learning. And in that spirit, I'd like to invite members of the city council and anyone listening in the public to join racial equity and justice in Redwood City by attending one of our reading sessions. Redwood City for Racial Justice is hosting about monthly reading groups that cover various readings. Last month, we read Martin Luther King Jr.'s Letter from Birmingham Jail. And the next book that we'll be reading is How to Be an Anti-Racist. So anyone's welcome to join us and try to further your personal journey toward anti-racism. I know I'm learning a lot in the group. You know, we all carry racist beliefs that we're trying to undo, and it's definitely a process. So we'd love to see anyone who's interested at our next monthly reading group. Thank you.
Thank you. Nisha Masharani and then Samantha Maloa.
Hello? Am I audible?
Yes, you are.
Um, hi. Thank you so much for the opportunity to speak. My name is Nisha Masharani, and I'm a resident of Redwood City. I want to second what some of the previous speakers have mentioned. I think it's great that the city council is considering adopting equity as another foundational guiding principle. I also think that, you know, one of the things that we heard in the PCRC listening sessions is that 75% of participants were worried that the city would only take symbolic action or make minimal gestures of change regarding systemic racism. And so I think this is a really great opportunity for the city to take action and then actually take the action. And I think there's a, I think so far, we've seen some gaps in the city's equity work plan. Of course, there's still a lot of time for the equity work plan to develop. But I do encourage the city council and members of city staff to join the reading groups that Amanda mentioned previously, you know, and really try to educate themselves on racism, not just generally, but racism specifically in Redwood City. I think anyone who believes that there is no racism in Redwood City is deluding themselves. And I think- And I think that racism exists from individuals through the entire structure of our city. And that's, that's not a problem. That's literally what systemic racism means. And so I really do think the city council has an opportunity to understand how specifically this function and structure of the city enforces racism and how the city can go and dismantle that to make Redwood City a more welcoming place for everyone. So thank you again. Have a great rest of your evening, and I really look forward to the city adopting this principle.
Thank you. Samantha Maloa.
Hi, I hope you're able to hear me.
Yes, I can.
Hi, everybody. Appreciate your time today, and I'll make it quick because the people that spoke before me said it so much better than I could. But I would just like to formally appreciate the city for making a formal recommendation to adopt this equity plan as a foundational principle. And I would just like to acknowledge that, like, our youth are watching right now, your sixth grade class at Roosevelt Middle School have just spent the first part of their schooling learning about racial justice, social justice, and what does equity mean. I'd like to find out more about, like, what are the actionable items that you plan to adopt, because equity does frame out so much more than racial equity. I'm thinking especially of my disabled sisters and brothers in the community and just the wide variety of people that need to find equity. I think this transitions very well into our next discussion about housing and housing equity. And so as we move forward and look into the future, I look forward to seeing how the city really defines and takes actions in this wide strategic plan, not just in a concept only, but in a true actionable way. Thank you.
Thank you very much. That was my last speaker, and now we'll have council discussion. Would anyone like to begin the conversation or consider making a motion?
I move the staff's recommendation. Ready?
I would second that recommendation, Borgans.
A motion to approve by council member Ready and seconded by council member Borgans to approve the addition of equity as a foundational guiding principle in the city's strategic plan. Could we have a roll call vote, please?
Yes. We'll start with council member Ready.
Yes.
Councilmember Hale.
Enthusiastically, yes.
Councilmember Aguirre.
Yes.
Councilmember Bean.
Yes.
Councilmember Borgans.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Mazur.
Yes.
And Mayor Howard.
Yes.
The motion passes unanimously.
And our thanks again to the ad hoc committee for their fine work. I appreciate it. Moving on to item number eight, eight A, it's a public hearing. Consideration of general plan amendment initiation requests for nine separate predominantly housing and commercial mixed-use development projects submitted as part of the gatekeeper process. I will be recusing myself from the commercial mixed-use gatekeeper projects because three of those projects could impact the Sequoia Hotel, and I have a continuing source of income that owns shares in the hotel. However, on September 30th, 2020, my husband and I were fully repaid for our sale of those shares, and this will no longer be a source of income 12 months thereafter. So I will be participating in part one. The staff will make a brief presentation on the four housing projects, followed by council clarifying questions, public comment on the four projects, council discussion of the four projects, and finally, the council will take a vote on the four housing projects. In part two, I will turn the meeting over to Vice Mayor Mazur and leave the Zoom meeting. Staff will make a brief presentation on the five commercial mixed-use projects, followed by council clarifying questions, public comment on the five projects, and then council discussion of the five projects, and finally, the council will take a vote on the five commercial mixed-use projects. Please only raise your hand on Zoom during the public comment portion of this item. There will be an opportunity for public comment on the housing projects and another opportunity for public comment on the commercial mixed-use projects. So let's start with part one, the housing projects. Community Development and Transportation Director Mark Munzer will give a presentation on the four housing projects. Mr. Munzer?
Good evening, Mayor Howard and city council. My apologies. First, for some reason, my profile picture is not showing up, but so long as you can hear me, that's what matters. I will indicate to the clerk when we're ready to start. I did want to note, we can't go to the first slide. Thank you very much. I did want to note that as we get into this conversation this evening, that we understand that these are difficult decisions. They were difficult recommendations to make. We began the gatekeeper process in order to allow for transparency in city council decisions on whether to consider projects that are not, that are not now, that are not currently allowed under our general plan, nor under, in many cases, our zoning. And to remind everyone that this is our first gatekeeper process. The gatekeeper process did allow for the council to consider several worthy proposals within the context of other proposals, within the context of creating a new vision for Central Redwood City, which you had previously had indicated you wanted us to begin, and also our ability to juggle all of this with our current staff resources. We know that it's not an easy bouncing act, and we know that the developers and many in the community have been involved in creating the proposals that are now before you, and we do truly appreciate their efforts to craft proposals which respond to your priorities. That being said, and as I will note in this presentation, more so in the part two, is if there is interest in initiating more than the five projects, then in all likelihood, we would need to pause that visioning process while we process the projects. So with that, I will begin the presentation. As you noted, these are a potential general plan initiation for nine different projects. Remind everybody that this is a project initiation decision and not a project review nor a project review approval or denial process. This merely begins the city review process, which includes discretionary planning review, community engagement, as well as SEQA and environmental review. The staff recommendation for the housing projects is to initiate three of them, which are listed there, one through three. They are a recommendation not to initiate 797 Arguello, which I'll speak to a little bit in this presentation, and I'm going to move past the commercial project for now, which will be discussed in part two. Next slide, please. The agenda for this evening, I'm going to briefly go over where we've been in terms of our study sessions on August 10th and September 21st. We'll talk about the ongoing long-range planning initiatives which staff have begun, and that includes Central Redwood City. It includes the transit district planning process, as well as our state-required housing element process. I'll also talk about what we have currently under review for development projects. We will talk about our resources and staff resources and otherwise and other considerations. I will briefly recap the proposed projects that are before you tonight, beginning with the residential set. And then, as you mentioned, Mayor Howard will have two decision points, one for the residential and one for the commercial projects. Next slide, please. So the questions for this evening are pretty straightforward. Do you have any questions for any of the applicants prior to making a decision? It's my understanding that applicants are available on this call. Should you want to reach directly to them if there are project-specific questions? Is there anything you need from us staff in terms of resource or other information prior to making decision, and of course, the initiation decision itself? There is an alternative slide that is in the staff report that I will speak to in this presentation. Next slide, please. So again, we had a study session on August 10th that reviewed four different housing projects, followed up on September 21st, which previewed five different commercial mixed-use projects, and we're here tonight to talk about a potential initiation. Next slide, please. The council's strategic priorities, you know well, for the public, your three key strategic priorities, housing, transportation, and children and youth, as was identified in each of the study sessions, each of the staff reports for those study sessions, as well as an attachment to this staff report. Staff made an initial analysis as to how we believe these projects do or do not meet those current strategic priorities. Next slide, please. These, this is a map, which, again, you've seen before, of the gatekeeper and current pending projects. So what we included on here was, in the light blue, the primarily residential projects. There is a fifth project there, as you know, number one, 1322 El Camino Real, the Recordman property, was withdrawn from this process and will be processed under the current downtown precise plan. The rest of the residential projects are in light blue. The dark blue are the primarily commercial projects, and nine of the 10, or eight of the nine remaining are located in the Central Redwood City planning area. I will note for those watching and listening, where you see in parentheses the various names, that refers to the present use on the site and not, and not who the city would be working with in terms of a development partner or a developer for a project. It merely refers to what's on site now. There are also other projects listed on there, larger projects such as South Main Mixed Use, Sequoia Station, Sioufie, and Harborview. As the staff report noted, we currently have under review about 14 development projects that require some sort of larger discretionary planning or SEQA environmental action. It equates to about 1,400 residential units, around 174 hotel rooms, and about 4 million square feet of commercial or office. Next slide, please. Also in the report, it spoke about anticipated projects. Anticipated projects means that a property owner, a developer, someone seeking site control have indicated to city staff or have emailed or have met with city staff about potential development of a site. We didn't want to be specific about that because they tend to be fairly early on in the process, and we want to make sure that they have at least filed a pre-application with the city. But we did want to show the general areas of the city where we're seeing that continued development interest, and then, again, for clarity, this is not part of the current review. This is part of a potential review. And it shows you that heat map, if you will, of continued interest primarily in the downtown and the Central Redwood City area, with some other areas of interest in other parts of the city, but generally mostly concentrated in and around the downtown. Within those anticipated projects are around 300 units of residential, about 83 hotel rooms, and a fair amount of office. Next slide, please. You've seen this slide before, and it's been updated. So to orient the public, the timeline is in purple in the middle of the slide, and it began in July when we first started these conversations and runs through the end of 2022, so effectively a two-year timeline. So the projects, these are all primarily in process and starting to go under review. So the top part being rail planning, so that includes potential new Caltrain station design, our grade separation studies, the technical studies that have to go along with that, the transit district process, which I'll speak to a little bit in the next slide, which is the area in and around the Caltrain station and the property that surrounds that. The next tier of projects is the general plan amendment request. So these gatekeeper projects would, if initiated, fall into that bucket. I will talk a little bit more about how we anticipate how long that process could take to review these projects. It also includes potentially a rebusening of the Sequoia Station development project, which also, as we sit here, would require a general plan amendment. The next bucket of items is the light purple above the dark purple arrow. Those are land use studies. So as I've mentioned, Central Redwood City housing element, the residential design guidelines, which primarily impact single-family properties, which has been under review for a considerable period of time, retail cannabis shortly coming to the city council for review. All of those are ongoing and are about to kick off. I will note on the housing element that that is required by the state of California. As in your report, we do anticipate that number to be around 5,000 units that we will need to plan and zone for. We do have an RFP out now for that housing element, and we hope to name a consulting partner soon. Below the purple line are the active development projects. So there's been some additions there, the larger ones, the Gray Star South Main Mixed Use, Stanford, Sioufie, which is 557 East Bay Shore, those are all still on there. There have been some other additions, as they've now filed formal applications with the city, such as 240 Twin Dolphin and 150 Charter. And then the yellow projects, which still fall into the anticipated development projects, but they are further enough along that we feel confident in naming them, in that they filed and that they have filed pre-applications, and they are listed there. Some of those include 1125 Arguello, the Recordman property, an affordable housing site on Middlefield. Next slide, please. This is the Central Redwood City planning map. Again, as I've mentioned before, the boundaries are not defined. That will be part of the community engagement and environmental review process. Generally speaking, we're looking at the areas between Whipple, El Camino, Woodside, and 101. Embedded within that Central Redwood City plan is the Transit District, which is outlined in green, which includes the Caltrain property, includes the SAM Trans property, a few, and then some adjacent private properties, including Sequoia Station. The pink dots are potential grade separation sites. Next slide, please. This shows you a hypothetical project review timeline. It's anticipated that any initiated project would take about two to three years to process and review before a project decision could be made. An initiated project would be assigned to a senior-level planner and go through a completeness process that can take upwards and over a year to get through the review by various divisions led by the Community Development and Transportation Department, but certainly supported by other departments such as fire, public works, housing, and parks and recreation. This would also include, and a lot of these happen concurrently as projects get more defined, but as a project is deemed complete and is ready to move forward, that's when the community outreach process would begin. It's when we start to get early input from some of our boards, committees, and commissions, such as Historic Review and Architectural Appearance Committee. And then also potentially, which is not noted on here, is depending on the project, depending on its size and location, could also involve study sessions with both the Planning Commission and the city council. As the community outreach is taken into account and mitigations or project changes are made, that's when we would release a SEQA document, which tends to be about at the end of the second year. And then that process, which is a draft environmental impact report and a final environmental impact report, all takes us into that typically into that third year. And again, we begin entitlement hearings sort of concurrently as the SEQA process is starting to wind down, and again, as more and more public input is taken into a project. And then you would finally get to entitlement hearings before the Planning Commission and the city council. Next slide, please. This, the, fully acknowledge the staff report talks in much more detail about staff resources than we typically do, and I did want to just provide a little context for that. We've, we've, we've done a lot of work to try and figure out internally the number of projects, if they were to be initiated, what that number would be, that staff could continue to work on all the current development projects, the long-range planning projects, as well as a certain number of initiated projects. With all of that being said, and as pointed out in the report, we have a comfort level with five of these projects, whatever they may be, in that we could accommodate that with our present city planning staff, as well as bringing on, in all likelihood, at least two more consulting firms or consulting planners that also have the expertise to take on projects of the size and complexity that requires a lot of technical review. So it's also, there's some vacancies that we're beginning to recruit for, particularly at the assistant director level, that will certainly help with that capacity moving forward. The council previously had approved contracts with three professional planning firms to provide on-call planning service for the gatekeeper projects and for some of our other development projects, and we certainly will pursue those opportunities. And the city council, or excuse me, the city has been awarded about $600,000 in grants to date that we can utilize from a funding aspect, and they are mainly targeted towards housing production and towards the creation of the housing element and meeting the RENA targets. Next slide, please. And there's the previous accounting for the ability to process up to five of the gatekeeper projects. There are options or projects if they are not initiated. They're labeled there. One is to resubmit a project that conforms with the general plan and the zoning code. The other is to participate in the city's long-range planning processes with Central Redwood City, with the Transit District, with the housing element, and come along and be a part of that process and revise the project in such a way that it meets those long-range planning goals and standards. revise the project in such a way that it meets those long-range planning goals and standards. They also have the opportunity to resubmit a new request after a two-year period. The staff specifically, as it relates to one of the projects at nine oh one El Camino and twenty-five twenty-nine Broadway, otherwise known as the AutoZone site, while we did not recommend, while certainly acknowledging the merits and benefits of that project, we did not recommend that it be initiated. And the reason I mention this is that it's an example of one that we would recommend be a part of, in this case, the Transit District planning process, and that they be part of those conversations and we have an understanding of what that development could be. Next slide, please. So I'm going to briefly go over the projects. I know you're all well aware of them. Again, we have the applicants on the line. First one is twelve oh five to twelve ninety-five Veterans. So it is proposed at four hundred and thirty rental housing units, seventy BMR units. As a reminder, those BMR units are based on the base density of the site. So if the math looks a little off, it's based on sixty dwelling units per acre, and that that's how we get to the seventy BMR units. And it proposes to include a childcare facility as well as a small amount of retail, including residential amenities at six stories tall. The daycare would be smaller at two stories and a significant amount of parking in interior parking structure. Next slide, please. The six fifty-one El Camino Real site, the American Legion site, proposed at three hundred and one rental housing units, sixty-eight BMR at low income targeted towards veterans. This would include a, a new American Legion Post one oh five site that is incorporated into the building and that would provide services to both onsite veterans and those in the community. Proposed at about eighty-five feet, as I mentioned the last time. That is close to some of the new multifamily buildings that are presently under construction on El Camino Real. The parking numbers are noted there, a little bit higher to account for the event space or the use of the American Legion space. And as noted in the staff report, there's a couple of options. Should this project be initiated, that we will be discussing with the applicant. The staff recommendation would be to initiate an amendment to the downtown precise plan, which was option two in your staff report. And if there's questions about that, we can, we can certainly ask, answer those. One thing I did fail to mention with me tonight is Principal Planner Anna McGill and Senior Planner William Chu. They will be here to assist me with questions this evening, and I thank them for all of their efforts to get us to this evening. Next slide, please. Five oh five East Bay Shore Road. I will note this is a new rendering that was submitted by the applicant since their hearing in August. This is a different project in that it's a proposed home ownership project, sixty units along East Bay Shore Road. Nine of those would be BMR at moderate income, which meets the fifteen percent requirement under the city's Affordable Housing Ordinance for ownership. It would include improvements to an adjacent public trail, as well as easements along the development site that is partially depicted in that rendering for open space and recreation along a new boardwalk. The height is three to four stories, and the parking number is articulated there. Next slide, please. Seven ninety-seven Arguello Street. The site is, exists presently with personal service uses. The proposal is for two housing units above the existing commercial. We will note that we did not recommend this project and as stated in the staff report, we were hopeful that there was state legislation that could be passed that could allow for residential development on commercially zoned sites such as this one. Unfortunately, that that did not pass in the last session, but we still believe that rather than go through a separate general plan amendment process and a CQ review process, which can, as I noted, be the very time-intensive as well as cost-intensive, that we'd be best to wait and see what happens in terms of state legislation that could allow this development to move forward on a more streamlined basis. Next slide, please. So there's the staff recommendation. Again, the recommendations as noted in the staff report, we believe the housing project should be initiated because it's a strategic priority of the city council, because we recognize the need certainly for housing in the community. And as I mentioned before, with the anticipated RENA projections of over five thousand units for Redwood City, these projects, if initiated and ultimately if approved, could certainly help us meet those those targets. And I mentioned the reasons behind seven ninety-seven Arguello. Next slide, please. So as I noted at the beginning of the presentation, there are alternatives. They are noted in the staff report. They are labeled here, one through five, so that what I'm speaking to is alternatives to the staff recommendation. So you could not take, you know, any action this evening. You could request additional information on these projects or on the commercial projects, and we would have to come back at a later date, likely in two thousand and twenty-one for a further analysis of them. Certainly initiate, deny, any combinations of the projects, while keeping it at five and allowing the central Redwood City planning process to 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 begin and continue or defer consideration if there was interest in initiating more than five of the projects. I won't get into number five because that's that second option under six fifty-one El Camino Real. We certainly can talk about it, but that option does not get the project to the density, even close to the density that they're proposing in terms of the number of units. So we certainly believe that the option that we recommended is is the better route, should that project be initiated. And I believe the next, next slide, please, are the questions for council. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mark. Thank you very much. I see a hand. Councilmember Ready? Do you have a question for either staff or an applicant?
I do indeed have a question for, and it may be for staff. I have, I was looking at all of the projects, residential and mixed use, and had some feelings about trading with, among the five that are recommended. And so I'm asking staff if there was an expectation that we adopt the resolution for residential first and then adopt the resolution for mixed use second. I would ask that we have a complete discussion about residential and multi-mixed use so that we can take those actions at the end of the complete discussion. Is that possible to do that?
I need to defer to the city attorney.
I think the city attorney needs to answer that question. Ms. Ramirez?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. No, I'm sorry, Councilmember Ready. I understand the interest. But the way that this has been broken up, it is that the residential projects will be discussed first and acted on. And then the second part, Mayor Howard is recused from participating, and she will leave the virtual room. And Vice Mayor Mazer will take on so that the remaining council members who can participate can discuss and vote on the mixed use projects.
Councilmember Ready, did you have any additional questions or comments?
No, it it puts me in a difficult position, but I I understand, so.
Yeah, I I agree with you. I feel the same way. But we're going to do things transparently and honestly, and that's the way we're going to move forward. But thank you for the question. I see Councilmember Hale. Do you have a question?
No, I'm good. Thank you.
Mr. Munzer, I had a question in that late in the day, I I think everyone on council received a letter from the Sierra Club in regards to five oh five East Bay Shore Road. It was late in the day, but I read it, and there were concerns about sea level rise and allowing housing to be built at the edge of the water with the possibility of sea level rise. I was wondering if we could ask the applicant to address that particular letter. I'm not sure that they saw that letter come in, but I'd, I do believe they did address it at their presentation once before. But I'd like to give them that opportunity to to address it now. How they're going to address sea level rise as they go forward, if their project is approved to move forward.
Mayor Howard, if I may.
Yes.
Certainly want to hear from the applicant. I would say, you know, high level, sea level rise and mitigations to accommodate for that, should that five oh five East Bay Shore be initiated, would all be part of the environmental review process. And and, you know, the necessary mitigations would be recommended within that EIR. And also, the project falls under the review of BCDC. And I'm sure the applicant will speak to that they have been working with that agency to receive their review and ultimate approval.
Thank you. Did the applicant want to speak now or do?
Yes, hello, Mayor Howard. Thank you. This is Jeff Smith with Sarah's Regis. Thank you very much for the opportunity to answer that question. Unfortunately, I was not provided a copy of this very late letter. And as Mark said, you know, again, this is a gatekeeper to allow the study of just that. And I did address this question in the last stay session in August. And in fact, we have been working with BCDC for almost a year now with multiple meetings, as well as we'll work with the city's engineering department and flood control to make sure that we are going to make sure that site is safe for development like that. And that that will include raising that site substantially on our, on the private dollars.
Well, thank you very much for the clarification. I do remember the last time you presented that you you touched on it. But I just wanted you to have that opportunity to to answer the letter. I'd be happy to forward it to you if you would like. It was shared with all of us and I, well, they probably will be sending it to you. I just wanted you to have that opportunity to answer what they were bringing up.
That will be great, and we will definitely circle back if so lucky to move forward with the Sierra Club.
Thank you. Does any, Councilmember Bain?
Thank you, Mayor. I just have a procedural suggestion, since I know that we're moving forward with the housing discussion first, that when we go to public speakers, that we ask for speakers who want to speak on the housing proposals, but those who are speaking on the mixed use hold their comments until the next section.
Exactly. And I did say that in the beginning, but I will remind speakers to do that. We want to keep it very simple, and we hope people will understand. Thank you. I did want to tell Mr. Munzer, I really like that heat map. It's very effective. First time I'm seeing it. I really, really like it. Quite a visual. I get the point.
Thank you, Mayor. There was some debate with that, so I'm glad it was informative.
Well, I'm glad I could be helpful and say thank you. Now, if council does not have any other clarifying questions, we could move on to open the public hearing and take public comment on the housing projects that have been presented so far. In order to see how many speakers we have on this item, I ask that everyone who wishes to speak on the housing projects only, would you please raise your hand now? And that would include the developers also.
Mayor, apologies for interrupting. I'm just looking at the list, and I'm noticing that some of the people who raised their hands, I know are to speak on some of the mixed use projects. And so maybe we could just show the slide of the projects that we're discussing, if you don't mind?
That would be a good idea. We won't be taking comment on the mixed use projects. I'm afraid you'll have to wait until we get to that topic. So it'll just be on the three housing projects that are before you, twelve oh five, twelve ninety-five Veterans Boulevard, six fifty-one El Camino Real, and five oh five East Bay Shore Road. If you could stick to those three projects, that would be helpful. Otherwise, I may have to ask you to wait. So right now, our city attorney would like to add a comment. Ms. Ramirez?
I just wanted to point out for the mayor that there are actually four projects under review by the council that are housing projects. The fourth project is seven ninety-seven Arguello.
Oh, that's correct. Mark Munzer mentioned that to us, that it the recommendation was to not initiate it. Thank you. We want to be clear on what we're speaking about. Right now, I see fifteen hands raised. And two developers on, okay, so we have seventeen people who would wish to speak. I would like to ask if you could keep it to two minutes. I'd really appreciate it. I'm sure that there are some of you who would like to speak more, but if you could consolidate to two minutes so that we can get through this evening and have everybody be heard who'd like to speak. So we will begin. We could start with the two, the two developers, Mr. Jeff Smith and then Jason Chek.
Yes. Good evening, Mayor Howard, Vice Mayor Mazer, fellow council members. Again, Jeff Smith with Sarah's Regis Group, and and really, I'll be brief. I wanted to just thank, first off, thank city staff, Mark, Melissa, Anna, and William for all your work on the gatekeeper process and really all your work for the last year that we've been working on our application for five oh five East Bay Shore. If we are so lucky tonight to move forward, we'll be very excited to continue our work with the outside planning group of urban planning partners, Curtis Banks and Company, who's made so much progress, again, working with BCDC and all the other hosts. We're obviously very excited to take a step to the community and have a rigorous and great discussion with the the local community. And again, with the goal of bringing the much-needed moderate and also below-market rate for sale housing to Redwood City. So again, I'll be very brief. Again, thank you for all your hard work, and I appreciate your support.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Jason Chek?
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmembers, can you hear me? Just a quick note.
Yes, I can.
Right, thank you. My name is Jason Chek with Rain Tree Partners. We're the applicant for twelve oh five Veterans Housing Project, and I just wanted to respond to some of the comments that were made during our initial hearing for the gatekeeper process and that we have revisited our site plan, and we will be adding three-bedroom units to the project. And also working on a subsidized round structure for the childcare facility, which will be included in our project, the details of which we'll be able to provide, should we be selected. But looking forward to continuing our effort and adding housing to the city and happy to answer any specific questions the council has or Mayor or members of the community. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Moving on, our next speaker is Maria Stockton, and then Isabella Chu. Maria, you're unmuted. You can speak.
Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't know I raised my hand. I'm sorry. I'm for the second part. I'm sorry.
Okay, that's okay. Isabella Chu, and then Ms. Adler.
Hi, so good evening, council, and thank you as always for your thoughtful approach to things. And it is really exciting to see so many housing projects downtown. I, you know, obviously, I'm in favor of all of them because more housing is almost always a good thing, and particularly housing near transit. I did want to comment, though, on the amount of parking available in these housing projects. So, you know, originally, when we did the downtown precise plan, the vision was to have about twenty-five percent of residents not drive alone, so twenty-five percent, you know, take transit and rely on non-automobile forms of transportation. And the the percent has has landed closer to forty percent. And yet, many of these projects have more than two parking spaces per unit, which is way overparked. And so given that this is a massive, you know, use of land, I mean, each parking space takes up between two hundred and fifty and three hundred and fifty square feet of land, including egress, the cost of providing parking spaces and the inability to use those parking spaces for anything else useful. I would really encourage these housing projects to reduce the amount of parking as much as possible to do studies of the percent of people who are actually driving alone downtown. As I said, it's close to sixty Uh, as I said, it, it's close to 60% and would probably go lower if we weren't giving away so much cheap land for car storage. Uh, and there's also a ton of parking downtown, uh, that's cheap or free, uh, if, if residents really want to store cars. So I think we could squeeze a lot more housing out of this if we reduce the parking. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Adler and then Lizette Espinoza.
Hi, hello councilmembers. I am councilwoman Nicole Adler from the State Council on Developmental Disabilities. As many of you know, I live in Redwood City and it's a hotspot and everyone wants to live here. The housing market in the Bay Area is super high, especially in San Mateo County. But I need you to listen to a specific minority group who really needs housing more than ever right now. Within, with that said, I have just learned the project at 609 price, which includes housing for people at the extremely low income level of affordability. City staff has recommended the city council reject the project. I am heartbroken. This project could be a great opportunity to create housing so I can move out of my mother's home, house and live in the, where, uh, mother, including, look, I am community where I can thrive. I had a housing voucher. I had a.
Let me help you.
Ms. Adler?
So bad, right, right here.
I'm asking and I am to move forward with this project. Many altering for, are not able to attend this meeting and speak.
Okay, I'm.
Thank you very much. Ms. Adler, I realized that you were speaking about a project that's under the mixed use, but, um, it, don't worry, I, I, I have your message and the note's been taken. Um, so thank you very much. Lizette Espinoza and then Gita Dev.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
Hi, okay, hello. Um, hello. So for these projects, I'd like to say that I'm in favor of creating more housing. Uh, we definitely have a deficit, especially for low income and very low income. And that's why I think we need to emphasize that right now in these projects, that we build low income and very low income units and that be specified how much they're making. And for multiple families, not just studios and one bedrooms, we need to ask for more affordable housing units to be made in these projects above the affordable housing ordinance of 15%. I'd say to at least 20% to start with, um, in order for it to be of any service to the regular residents of Redwood City, because I hope that would still be a priority for everyone, that we are serving the regular, uh, average person in Redwood City. For example, the 505 East Bay Shore touts that it's going to build 110% above the housing requirement, but that is only 1% higher than the required from 15% to 16%, not a difficult feat. It is not a transit oriented development since it's from on the other side of 101 and it's only being reserved for those at median income level. So it's not nearly enough for residents. So we should definitely emphasize transit oriented, more centralized housing for low income and very low income if they're going to build affordable income housing, not just at the median income level, like at the 505 East Bay Shore. And if there has to be growth, the city should expand in more low rise, high value transit oriented neighborhoods that are currently protected by the zoning codes. So essentially those more affluent and that aren't displaced by gentrification. So I hope you take that into your initiatives for future housing. I hope we all understand that 15% for an ordinance is certainly not enough. And we start to ask developers to serve the community more as they create more buildings. Thank you very much.
My next speaker is Gita Dev and then P. Toy.
Hello, this is Gita Dev. Am I unmuted?
Yes, I can hear you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor Howard and city council members. Um, my name is Gita Dev. I'm speaking on behalf of the Sierra Club and you're right, we did send in the letter rather late. I apologize. But we, we are, the Sierra Club is extremely delighted to, to be speaking on these housing projects. We are very supportive of, uh, the three of them, the Veterans Boulevard one, El Camino, and even the Arguello one. Uh, we're here today to speak on the 505 East Bay Shore Road. Main, uh, reason is that it's ownership housing and it's in an area of the city where the city does not have any plan in place for providing needed infrastructure upgrades for safe public access, critical utilities to deal with the rising water levels. Um, I know that the, that the developers build up pads so that they meet B C D C's guidelines. B C D C, by the way, is revising their guidelines and the process of revising their guidelines because in the last two years, the Ocean Protection Council has now raised their projections for sea level rise from 3.5 feet in 70 years, in, in 80 years to 3.5 feet possibly in 30 years. So this is an area of Redwood City that is very vulnerable. All the other cities are doing vulnerability assessments and adaptation plans before proceeding with even more development in these vulnerable areas. Palo Alto is doing a sea level plan, Menlo Park, St. Carlos, Foster City, all around us. So Redwood City really needs to first do an assessment before planning to do general plan amendments in an area where we know that we are vulnerable to sea level rise and to give entitlements or to give, uh, you know, sort of. Thank you very much.
Thank you. P. Toy and then George Smith. I think you need to unmute yourself.
Can you hear me?
There you go. Yes, I can.
Hello, I'm Peggy Toy. And my appreciation to the mayor and the city council for hearing my input regarding 651 El Camino Real. As president of the American Legion Auxiliaries County District 26, uh, I'm representing six Bay Area auxiliary units and we're excited and fully supportive of Post 105's effort to create low income housing with preference for veterans. We're also pleased Post 105 has had the foresight to include a veteran service officer position as an onsite benefit for the men and women who served our country. Time and again, Post 105 demonstrates this commitment to our Bay Area veterans. The auxiliary encourages the council to support the original terms of the agreement between the post and Republic, specifically retaining the original vision of the American Legion. Thank you so much for your continued support of the American Legion and the American Legion Auxiliary of Redwood City.
Thank you very much. George Smith and then San Mateo County Veteran Services Office.
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
Yes, my name is George Smith. I'm representing the San Mateo County Veterans Commission. I am the vice, uh, chair, chair for the commission and we highly recommend the 651 El Camino Real project, um, the 68 units that are set aside for veterans will definitely be a advantage to all of the veterans in San Mateo County. We have very few, uh, residences that are available to them. We're particularly looking at the, uh, the college students. And, uh, we definitely want to help all the veterans that we can per, po- possibly help. And we, we thank Redwood City, uh, the, the commission and, and, uh, council for all their support in this project. Thank you.
Thank you very much. San Mateo County Veteran Services Office and then Kelsey Baines.
Good evening, Mayor Howard, city council members. Um, I'm speaking in behalf of, uh, of the 60 El Camino American Project. My name's Eduardo Kerikson. I'm the county of San Mateo's Veteran Service Office. Our office works closely with veterans every day of the week, every week of the year. Uh, often housing is one of the major challenges for our veterans, particularly younger veterans returning home from service. We work closely with the community colleges. There's hundreds of young veterans in our community colleges, go to school full time, work full time, and access to affordable housing in particular for them is crucial to their success. Projects like these help honor the service, their service by giving them a chance to succeed and thrive in our community. And so we request the city's support of this project as it's outlined, as it's, as it's been proposed. And we thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Kelsey Baines and then Clara Jekyll.
Uh, good evening, city council. My name is Kelsey Baines. I am with the group Peninsula for Everyone. We advocate for more housing at all income levels, protection of tenants and, um, more sustainable, um, and better transportation choices. And want to start by thanking the, the city council and city staff for prioritizing, um, really important needs of the community during, uh, this process, uh, one of which is housing. Uh, so many of our neighbors right now are living in unsafe, uh, or overcrowded or just unstable conditions during this crisis. Um, and now more than ever, we desperately need more homes, especially homes, uh, that are located in transit oriented locations with lots of services and especially homes that are available at affordable prices. Um, so, uh, overall, I would just say, I, I think you have a lot of great choices, uh, on the table tonight and, uh, hope that you will maximize whatever housing you're looking for, um, or whatever housing, uh, you're looking at. Uh, and I want to agree with Isabella Chu's comments about, um, less parking would be a good thing. If, if we had less, less land dedicated to parking, we could have more land dedicated to housing, which is really our greater need. We don't need more car storage. We need more homes for people. Um, and I also agree with, uh, Lizette Garnica Espinoza's point that we should also be changing the zoning in, uh, exclusionary neighborhoods that aren't adding any homes right now because this house, housing crisis is very dire. Um, and, uh, in terms of the other groups that could be served here, um, I'm a big fan of serving veterans with affordable housing. That's a great need, uh, for our region, um, as well as, uh, doing set asides for developmentally disabled individuals. Um, I think that's something that could be added to projects here. Thank you.
Thank you. Clara Jekyll and then Nisha Masharini, Masharani, sorry. Clara?
Yes. Hi, thank you for the opportunity to speak. Um, I want to say that I second the comments made by Lizette Espinoza Garnica. And, um, I think it's very important to, um, find, uh, not only affordable housing, but particularly for low income and very low income residents. And in light of that, I have concerns about the 505 East Bay Shore project that, um, that that might only make its units available to moderate income and still be, uh, unavailable or, you know, unattainable for very low income residents. So I would like to see more attention, um, on, uh, on the levels of income there and, um, and, uh, and effort to, to make that, um, more attainable for such, um, this portion of our residents. And, um, also, uh, just in general, um, uh, transit oriented housing is a, would be a high priority. So, um, thank you for that.
Thank you. Nisha Masharani and then Alex Melendrez.
Hi, um, again, I introduced myself earlier. My name is Nisha Masharani, uh, and I'm a resident of Redwood City. Um, I just wanted to say I'm really excited that the, the council is considering, uh, approving these housing projects. I think we do need more housing and I'm really excited about that. I do think however, there's an opportunity to make, uh, more of these, uh, more of these units affordable. And I also agree with Lizette that some of them should be larger for, uh, for families rather than individuals. Um, you know, right now it seems like these developments are really trying to do the bare minimum when it comes to, uh, providing affordable housing. Um, and I also think that in Redwood City, the median income is really, really high. Um, and so a moderate income or, uh, uh, you know, low, low, uh, income affordability is still quite a bit of money per month. Um, and so I really do think that we should focus more on very low income and extremely low income families. Um, and really just focus on making sure that we're not just doing the absolute bare minimum here and make sure that we're actually providing and creating the affordable housing that we need. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Alex Melendrez and then Chris Johnson.
Uh, good evening, uh, Redwood City City Council. My name is Alex Melendrez. I'm an organizer with the Housing Leadership Council of San Mateo County or H L C. We work with communities and their leaders to produce and preserve all the affordable homes. Um, we have specifically endorsed 505 East Bay Shore, but I do want to say that we are glad to see all these homes and all these proposals moving forward. We, we desperately need more, uh, homes, especially affordable housing. And when I look at these, uh, the number of homes, when I, uh, look at the, the so-called unit count, I can't help but think of all the actual people these numbers will represent. People who will be able to stay in their community, the new community members who will be welcome to Redwood City. Um, the council, uh, you know, through moving these projects forward, the council has really shown that housing, uh, is their, uh, number one priority. Uh, and that I hope, uh, the council continues to, uh, prioritize, uh, uh, housing in, uh, future decisions. Thank you very much for prioritizing these housing proposals.
Thank you. Chris Johnson and Andrew Trapani.
Uh, good evening, city council, city staff, members of the public. My name is Chris Johnson, resident of Redwood City. My feelings on the American Legion, um, post, uh, project are well documented and well known. I couldn't think of a better example of a high density, um, project on a transit line that's going to serve our underserved community. So I'm a big fan of that project. I hope it advances. Um, I also like to make a point that I, uh, agree with Isabella Chu on, in regards to parking. And, and the reason why I agree with it is because we are accepting projects right now based off of a downtown precise plan that is over 10 years old. And the E I R for the downtown precise plan was done in 2008. So it's been proven over the years that our parking requirements are out, painfully outdated. And we've done a good job with our commercial projects, office projects, because we've accepted thousands and thousands and thousands of, um, dollars in exchange for in lieu of parking. So we know that the box building is overparked and we've been a beneficiary of that, uh, allowing us to sublease some of those spaces. But I really believe that we should be looking at the parking minimums for these residential projects, especially because those assumptions are over 10 years old. And if we can reduce parking, we can build more units. Finally, I, I would love some clarity on the Rain Tree Project on veterans. I was just looking at the numbers. I see 430, um, housing units, but only 70 of those are affordable. So I'm wondering, uh, it seems like it's a little less than 20%. I would hope that our housing providers that are before you this evening would actually dig deeper than the bare minimum or less than the bare minimum on the affordable housing. I'd like to hear some clarity on that. So thank you very much for your consideration on these projects.
Thank you. Andrew Trapani.
Good evening, Madam Mayor of City Council. My name is Andrew Trapani. I am the commander of the Sons of American Legion Post 105 in Redwood City. The American Legion has had a relationship with the Redwood City for 70 years now. This project will ensure that that continues beyond this next 70 years. Also, it's going to provide a great opportunity for veterans who serve this country to move into low income housing so they can get situated back into the world. I know that the city council is aware of all the needs of veterans. You've heard many stories and I think that this project speaks volume about how we can help our veterans returning and gliding a leg up. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. I have no spe- more speakers at this time for the housing projects. So if there's no objection, I will now close the public hearing. And we'll start council discussion and questions. Who would like to begin? Thank you for putting the screen up there with the questions. A council member ready?
Thank you, Mayor. And thank you, staff, for all the work that's been done on this house. And thank you, developers, for the enthusiasm you've demonstrated during this gatekeeper process. And I do encourage those of you who are not recommended and do not move ahead with this process to please stay connected because there were some great projects that were given to us. And I'm trying really hard to stay within staff's request to stay within five projects. But I do need to be candid to let you know that one of my projects that I want to add to the five is in the multi-use list. So that being said, I do have some comments. 1205 to 1295 Veterans Board is the same developer that built 201 Marshall. It offers, this 1205 Veterans offers 430 units of housing units, 70 of which are offered at affordable levels that have not been identified. The affordability levels have not been identified. In the spirit of full disclosure, I will report that when 201 Marshall was first approved by council, I inquired as a resident why there were not any affordable units being offered. I was told affordable units were not required because 18 studios were planned. When I asked how much those units would cost when available, I was told it would be in the $1,800 range. Upon launch, those studios were offered at $2,800 a month. Residents have reported to me since the beginning that units were vacant. Management at 201 Marshall responded by leasing units on Airbnb and educating their residents about how they could rent their units out on Airbnb. I appreciate the developer offering to move affordable units to 201 Marshall, but I suggest such an offer should be a both-and, not an either-or offer. Market rate units are vacant in Redwood City, not affordable ones. If council is advised not to include all projects in the gatekeeper process, which it has been, I suggest that we let this one go and prioritize those projects that are generous about their offers for affordable housing. 651 El Camino is the American Legion site that offers 301 units of housing, 68 of which would be for low-income veterans. It has to be said that if this project is truly supporting veterans, vulnerable veterans, the ones who need housing the most, do not make $97,000 a year. And that's what would qualify them for low-income units. I would not support this project if that number cannot be adjusted. Either include extremely low, which is around $3,600,000, or very low, which is $60,000, or set aside Section 8 units so vulnerable veterans can truly be served. 505 East Bay Shore Road offers 60 townhouses, nine of which, because these are for sale, nine of which are offered at the moderate level, and moderate is $120,000. Redwood City has very few opportunities for affordable for-sale units. And I do support this project, though I confess I do agree with Sierra Club's position that an assessment for sea level rise should be obtained first before we start talking about building on the east side. The rest of my comments have to do with multi-use. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Ready. Councilmember Hale?
Thank you. Well, much like Councilmember Ready, I didn't anticipate that we would be splitting our comments into the two separate sections. So what I'm actually going to do is hold most of my questions for the second section. And I'll just pull out a few to speak to this section, and my questions I'll hold to the next session as well. I wanted to say that I support the staff recommendation on the housing portion of the staff recommendation. And I wanted to respond to some of the comments that were made by members of the public. First, I want to show a word on three-bedroom units. Three-bedroom units are a major passion point for me, and I'm really grateful that this is something that everyone on our council has begun to champion. Developers tend to not build three-bedroom units, and that makes it very difficult if you are a renting family to find a place to live. And it can create a lot of turmoil and being uprooted in a child's life. And so we've put a big emphasis on this. And I want to add that RENA, which is this, we have referred to several times, it's a housing allocation. It's a number that we are given by the state. It tells us how many units of affordable housing we need to assist in the production of through the permitting process, through the zoning process, to meet those goals, to meet the needs of our community. And we have, the way RENA looks at units today is that it focuses on units produced and not on people housed. And so a studio, in their eyes, is as soon as a three-bedroom. So in keeping track of these rules, we are actually really understating how housing people. And so I just want to put that out there, that this is a really big investment we're making. And if we wanted to just look good from a numbers perspective, it would be much easier to achieve that through studios and one-bedrooms. There was a comment made about moderate-level housing. Moderate is also important. This is housing for your teachers and nurses who actually make too much money to qualify for affordable housing, but also can't find sustainable long-term housing in Redwood City, but who here? So also in favor of moderate housing. And then I just wanted to add a comment on the parking and environmental concerns. As Mr. Munzer shared at the beginning, this is like step one of a three-year process, multi-tiered process. And there will be ample opportunity to look at parking levels, to look at environmental concerns, and those will be addressed during the process. And I want to also add that not every project may make it to the end of the process through the combination of needing to go through all of those other criteria and then just through market forces. This is the beginning. I'm very supportive of taking this first step towards achieving our housing goals.
Thank you, Councilmember Hale. Just to be clear, I know that we're going to be asked to vote on which projects, housing-wise, we would like to initiate. We won't be taking them all together. It'll be done separately. I really apologize for the inconvenience, but it's the way it has to be done for tonight. Councilmember Borgans.
Thank you, Mayor Howard. And I have a couple of questions, and maybe this could go to Mark or maybe the developers themselves. Could we get an explanation on the parking accommodations and what metrics was used to measure those needs? Every one of them is over what I would think to date. And I've always been the council member that says, "Don't underpark it." But I have flipped that and realized that we do have an opportunity to provide more units, especially now when we're talking about going all-electric, which could actually take up some spaces that would ordinarily have been used for possibly a housing unit. So what metrics did we use to come up with these parking needs? And how old is that information? Mark?
Yes. Good evening, Councilmember Borgans. Thank you. So to the previous, to Councilmember Hale's previous statement, the final parking, in terms of the amount of spaces that would be contained in any of these developments, these residential developments, is part of the discretionary planning process and part of working with the developer as to what the parking needs to be for their proposed development. So that often changes once a project is initiated or begins its review. The various zoning districts, the downtown, have parking requirements. And sometimes developers match those requirements, and sometimes they, you know, say they're not going to meet them, and they can pay fees to the city. But really, the short answer is it's preliminary at this point in time. And we are always encouraging that sites not be overparked, particularly when they are in close proximity to transit. And yes, the downtown precise plan did have parking assumptions that were made when that EIR was done that, you know, if we revisit that through a new downtown plan or central Redwood City plan, that would be part of that process to say, do these likely need to be lowered or do they need to be changed?
Because many of these projects had the parking counts within them, and so that is just a place-card holder, is what you're saying then? Because it was part of what they normally do?
Right. So they, and again, the city has parking requirements based on the unit size, but it's a combination of what the city requirements are and what they believe, you know, based on, since most of them have done similar developments, either in Redwood City or other similar transit-adjacent areas that they believe that they would need. But again, I wouldn't get, you know, this is really parking and the amount of spaces and the amount of square footage that it would take in a development is, you know, a key part of the conversations that we have.
Okay, great. So moving forward, we have the potential of changing that conversation.
Yes.
Correct? Okay, good. All right. And then with the East Bay Shore project, if I could ask, and I'm not sure if it's you, Mark, or if it would be the developer, how are they working with the BCDC's new sea level rise expectations? And what actions, if any, are they prepared to include with that discussion? Because we heard from, I think it was Gita Dev, that the requirements are going to change. So is that going to be in concert with this project?
Councilmember, I'll have to defer to the applicant as to what their contents of the conversation were with BCDC.
Yes, Councilmember Jeff Smith with Sarah Strigis again. That would be part of the BCDC discussion and approval. And as that discussion moves forward, you know, along with the city's requirements, we will adjust the site plan as needed. If you recall, we're already planning on bringing the grade up, so to speak, and we're also proposing a boardwalk at the north side, basically the water side of the project. The combination of raising the grade and building this wall will meet whatever standard is there. So if those numbers do go up, then we will plan on meeting those or exceeding those as required.
Thank you. And I appreciate your comment that you'd be willing to meet and sit down with the Sierra Club and discuss their concerns.
Yes.
So that would be good. Okay, thank you very much. On the El Camino veterans' housing, it was mentioned by several of the speakers that there is a huge need for veterans' housing. Do we happen to know where there are other veteran housing opportunities? Is this something that has been done in our nearby communities?
Councilmember Borgans, I'm going to defer possibly to Lynn Lancaster, who may have that information. I know that Menlo Park has, I believe, at least one, if not two, facilities dedicated to veterans' housing, but I don't know if she has more information.
Good evening, Councilmember Borgans. The city of Colma also has a veterans' housing development. And I believe the developers' architect also worked on that project that they might be able to speak to as well.
I see a hand raised. Rick Williams, would you be able to answer that question?
Yes, this is Rick Williams from Van Meter Williams Pollock. And yes, indeed, we are the architects on the veterans' housing development in Colma, which was recently opened to great success. We are also aware of an existing veterans' housing development that is partially veterans' housing. It's a mixed development in Mountain View, which we are also involved in. And we're currently working on a new veterans' housing development on the VA property in Menlo Park, but in the very, very, very early stages. One thing I do know that San Mateo County and Santa Clara County both have an extreme need for veterans' housing. It's an extreme shortage, and we are looking at both low and very low income levels for the housing on this development in Redwood City. And we're very much looking forward to it.
Great. Thank you. Thank you for that information. To Councilmember Ready's comments earlier, there's very few veterans that are making what the median income would be for even low income. So I'm certainly, you know, for all of the developers listening, if there was ever an opportunity to provide Section 8 housing vouchers to help some of those actually qualify, you know, with what they make to live in some of these units that we're calling low-income or affordable, that would be extremely helpful. I don't know where that sits legally, but it's a conversation I think that's worth having. So I will wait to hear the rest of my colleagues. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Borgans. Would any other council members like to speak at this time? Vice Mayor Mazur?
Thank you. Just a couple of comments. First, I was happy to hear some of the changes on the veterans' project, in particular, working to provide a sliding-scale childcare as you move forward and also increasing the unit size in some of your apartments. I'll say two things because I live in an apartment on the east side of 101. So there are actually already homes out here. So 505 Bay Shore would not be the first. And the second thing, I was just actually looking to see what's available in our building. And while there are quite a few one- and two-bedroom units available, all of the three-bedroom units are full, and they're consistently full. And so, you know, just as another sort of push on everyone who's coming to us with housing projects to think about that extreme need for families to have a place that is big enough for them to live. And, you know, just sort of looking at the market, that is what we're seeing. So and then the last thing, I just wanted to make a note on Section 8. I believe, and I could be misremembering this legislation, but I believe there was legislation in California that requires low-income housing providers to accept, or people who are renting low-income housing, to accept Section 8 vouchers as rent payment. So there is always a challenge with the federal government where Section 8 comes from in terms of the amount of money that they provide. But it's my understanding that applicants who do have Section 8 vouchers cannot be rejected because of that. So just a note as we sort of move forward and think about the affordability levels of the different homes. But with that, I will stop talking.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Mazur. Councilmember Bane or Councilmember Aguirre?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll take it from here. You know, I agree with my colleagues. I know that as a professor at Kenyatta College that we have a lot of programs for veterans, and it would be great, and they are young, and it'd be great to have housing for them. So I agree with a lot of the comments we made earlier. And I also agree with Vice Mayor Mazur. You know, when you buy a home or you buy, looking for something that you're renting, you're looking for more space, whether you have one child or two child. So I'm really, really a proponent of making sure that we have more than studios offered. And think of the homes that you would want to live in. And so I want to really support that concept. And I'm... And I am really grateful for the all the folks that are here to support that, developers and also the comments that have been made from the community to make sure that we're doing the right thing for housing. Because this is what we're looking at right now. So, thank you.
Thank you, councilmember Aguirre. Councilmember Bain?
Thank you, Mayor Howard. If there's no further discussion or questions, I'd like to make a motion to advance reprop.
Excuse me, councilmember Bain. I'd like to be able to speak. If you don't mind. Before you make your motion.
Please go ahead.
The only chance I'm going to get tonight on this one. So I had, first of all, I wanted to thank Ms. Adler, who spoke about developmental disabilities and the need for housing. We got a letter earlier today from Sioux Degree, former mayor of Pacifica, who works for Parca along the same line. And I wanted to ask Mark, I believe that these housing developments of some one or two of them mentioned that they were going to have some of their units be available for the developmentally disabled. I was wondering if you could remind me who they were?
I believe the one of them was associated, Mayor Howard, with the commercial project at twenty three hundred Broadway. So I know we're not speaking to that project right now. I will ask, I believe there was one or the one that was reserving units. So I don't know if Ms. McGill or Mr. Chu have that information. I can't recall off the top of my head, other than the, you know, one associated with the commercial project.
Yeah, I I remember a housing project saying that, but I'll just say it that it definitely is a need. And if there's a way that they could provide that, I know that would be an amenity that people in the community would truly appreciate because we we really do need more housing for people who have disabilities. And it would be lovely if someone would be able to do that within their own project. I also want, I'm glad you told me the parking requirements will be analyzed. Because I was going to say, having read these different proposals, they feel overparked to me also. I could be wrong, but I'm glad that there's some science going to be put to it and to look at if, in fact, less parking would be needed. Because I I'd like to say to twelve oh five, twelve ninety five veterans that if, in fact, less parking was needed and possibly the clubhouse, that sounds pretty, pretty large. And they call it an amenity, but if maybe it was made smaller, they might have more room for affordable units within their project. I I'd like to see more affordable units within their project. The Veterans Senior Center site, the American Legion site, I was hoping that more more veterans would be served. Twenty three percent, very low and low. I I would like to see, again, if we look at the parking and say that we could do with less parking or we could find a way to consolidate either with electric charging stations or and share, parking share. Maybe they could also provide more low and very low residences for our veterans who have served us proudly and some of them really do need a place to live. The five oh five East Bay Shore, I I'm not sure many people know. They're going to help us pay for the Bloomquist Extension, which is something we've been planning for many years. And it is going to enable us to get safely east west over the 101 for for public safety and for future transit for people who are living on the east side of 101. And I consider that to be a great amenity. There are also going to be public trails and a boardwalk with pedestrian and bike pathways as well as some other amenities. I don't expect them to do as many very low income because, first of all, it is on the east side of 101 and we always feel we should put our highest density and affordable units around transit. And so therefore, I would give that to around the downtown area, close to transit would be where I'd wish my affordable housing could go so that people wouldn't have to use a car possibly and also be close to services. I think those are all of my comments. And as far as the the last project, Arguello, I agree with the recommendation to deny initiation. It's only two units. The affordability of those two units was never clearly defined. So considering the amount of work that goes into a general plan amendment, I think that was a wise decision to deny initiation of that project. So I I have no other comments at this time. And I know staff is looking for a recommendation on the housing. So I'd like to ask if anyone would like to at this point, make a recommendation or a motion? Councilmember Bain?
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to move that we advance the three projects that were recommended by staff. And if there's a second, I'd like to say a few words about that.
Second by Hale? Second, yeah, okay.
Great. Is there any discussion? Councilmember Bain?
Yes, just very briefly, I I agree with many of the comments that were made. I want to make sure that the public understands that the vote we're taking right now is not to approve these projects. The vote we're taking is to initiate the study of these projects for general plan amendments. So there's a big difference between those two things in my mind. I agree with many of the comments that were made in terms of taking a very close look at the parking ratios and whether or not the amount of parking is needed at each of these locations. I agree with the comments about the the size of the units and whether or not they can truly families as opposed to just being studios. And I also agree with the comment about the affordability levels. I I really would like to see all these things very closely studied, particularly on the issue of veterans being able to afford the units. I think that we have sent some very strong messages to the developers. So I hope that those things will be studied as these things go forward. Again, we're not doing final approvals. This is just initiating the study of these projects. I also want to say for the clarity of the public that there were many years that the city was not allowed to require that below market units were built into these projects. That's only been the last few years because of recent legislation by our local assembly member, Kevin Mullen. Prior to that, we were not allowed to do that. Previous to that, going many, many, many years back, we had a tool called redevelopment, which councilmember Ready alluded to. And that allowed us to include below market units just within the redevelopment area. So we've kind of come full circle on this. Of course, we would love to see developers go above and beyond the requirements. But just even having that basic requirement is huge progress on on where we started. So I'm looking forward to moving forward with this. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, councilmember Bain. Councilmember Hale? Okay, we have a motion on the floor, councilmember Bain and seconded.
Mayor, I did sorry, I was reaching for my mute button. I wanted to, I wanted to echo one of the comments that councilmember Bain made and make this point while we have all of the developers on the line regarding family housing, which is it is not just about including the units. It's about truly integrating families into the developments. I hear from many, many residents who are renting in Redwood City downtown in some of these larger apartment buildings that they get a lot of complaints about their children running around and being children, which is all more palatable if if families are together. And there's truly like a family area of the development. So it asks developers to be really thoughtful about designing for the needs of all residents and making sure that those families really feel welcome with the children can grow up in in those in those facilities. Thank you.
Thank you, councilmember Hale. That's a good point. So I have a motion made by councilmember Bain and the second, I believe, was by councilmember Hale? Thank you. So could we call for a roll call at this time?
Yes. Let's start with councilmember Hale.
Yes.
Councilmember Ready?
I guess it's a yes.
Councilmember Aguirre?
Yes.
Councilmember Bain?
Yes.
Councilmember Borgans?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Mazur?
Yes.
And Mayor Howard?
Yes.
The motion passes unanimously.
Mr. Munzer, did you have a question? Oh, we have another resolution. Is that what you're letting me know?
Yes, Mayor.
Good, thank you. Good catch. We have a second resolution and I'd like to get a motion and a second to deny initiation of the following housing project, seven nine seven Arguello Street.
I'll make that motion. This is
A second, Ready?
Okay, a motion is made by councilmember, was that Borgans or Ready? I'm sorry.
Borgans.
Borgans and seconded by councilmember Ready?
Correct.
Could we have a roll call on that, please?
Yes, we'll start with councilmember Aguirre.
Yes.
Councilmember Bain?
Yes.
Councilmember Borgans?
Yes.
Councilmember Hale?
Yes.
Councilmember Ready?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Mazur?
Yes.
And Mayor Howard?
Yes.
The motion passes unanimously.
Thank you, everyone. I'd now like to turn over the meeting to Vice Mayor Mazur. And I'll be leaving the Zoom meeting and I will be back for item eight B. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mayor. All right, so with this, having gladly moved all those housing projects forward, we'll be moving on to part two of our discussion of the gatekeeper process, where we'll be discussing the five proposed commercial or mixed use projects. And I believe our director, Mark Munzer, do you have another presentation, Mark? Or did you already?
I do, Vice Mayor, but I promise it's much shorter.
I just know that some of it got put together, so, okay, great.
Indeed, I I will quickly go through it. It's just an overview of the projects.
Perfect, thank you.
You're welcome. Good evening again, Vice Mayor, Mayor Mazur and City Council. So again, there are the questions and I would ask for the next slide, please, so we can have an overview of these proposed projects. The first proposed project is located at nine oh one to nine 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 El Camino Real, commonly known as the Autozone site. It is also, you'll recall shortly before the study session, the applicant added a site at twenty five twenty nine Broadway, which is technically an offsite housing site, but it is adjacent or kitty corner from the primary development site on El Camino. The proposal is for one hundred and fifty four thousand square feet of office. The offsite on Broadway is proposed to contain sixty B M R units in a partnership with Hip Housing. Proposed building is eight stories or ninety two feet. The rendering that you're looking at is fronting El Camino Real. So the office building is the building, the taller building to the left. And to the right is a two-story teen center that the applicant is proposing as a community amenity. You'll note here that they are proposing below what is technically the city requirement for parking at this site by about a hundred spaces or ninety eight spaces and proposing in Luffy. Next slide, please. Six oh one Allerton is an eighty thousand square foot office building. It is proposing to include eight B M R units onsite, so within the building envelope. There, you're looking at a rendering of the proposal fronting at the corner of Allerton and including, I believe, at that corner would be a retail cafe, proposed retail cafe space, rooftop, publicly accessible pickleball court and clubhouse located on the top of the building as described in the study session. That entry, as my understanding, would be separate to allow for public accessibility to the upper level. Proposed height is fifty nine feet or five stories. And the the parking is not defined in terms of spaces, but rather at square footage at this point in time. I will note on this proposal that there was a comment made that and that we had staff incorrectly noted that there was an additional contribution, I believe, of about five point four million dollars on this particular site. And that was not part of the proposal. So that was a misinterpretation and that was meant to define that that that's the value as the developer is defining it of those eight B M R units. Next slide, please. Nineteen hundred Broadway, the corner of Broadway and Main, the present site of Wells Fargo, as well as a city street in City Parklet. The rendering you're looking at there is Broadway and Main, two hundred and thirty four thousand square feet of office, fifty four B M R units that would be located on the upper floors of that rendering that you're looking at. Also a partnership with Hip Housing at low and very low income levels, ten thousand square feet of retail. The rendering you're looking at now shows it divided up with a retail kiosk on the corner with the remaining retail space along Broadway that would be defined as part of the project if it was initiated. Eighty seven hundred square feet of what they're calling a public commons, but a publicly accessible space at the corner of Broadway and Main. Seven stories, ninety two feet. And two levels of below grade parking, again, the total parking not defined, some of which is is offered to be publicly accessible. Next slide, please. This, thank you, twenty three hundred Broadway and six oh nine Price. So twenty three hundred Broadway, the site of the present Chase Bank Building at Broadway and Hamilton. The rendering or the site plan, excuse me, for twenty three hundred Broadway is to the left. And the project is in the lower left corner of that site plan that's shown in a light orange or salmon type color on each of the corners, which are active uses or retail. They are proposing an offsite B M R proposal at six oh nine Price Avenue. Six oh nine Price would also, should the project be initiated, both projects would have to be general plan amendments. Six oh nine Price, both in the general plan and in the zoning code, is zoned for office use. So that would be aspect of the decision for this project. Again, proposing about fifteen thousand square feet of retail. They are proposing the middle of that left site plan, about twenty thousand square feet of open space, which they're calling Hamilton Walk, adjacent to maintaining a number of the existing redwood trees on site. The height is proposed at nine stories and the parking is not yet specified. The rendering to the right is the proposal for the offsite affordable building at six oh nine Price. Next slide, please. And then the the final commercial project is six oh three Jefferson, seven fifty Bradford, which is a partnership between the Sproato Organization and the Redwood City School District. The rendering to the left is the one hundred and seventy thousand square foot office proposal. And the rendering to the right is what presently is defined as sixty eight offsite workforce units for school district staff and or faculty. The parking would be above a one story shared podium due to an existing culvert. And the heights of the buildings are differentiate themselves by about two stories at seven stories and five stories. Next slide, please. So the staff recommendation, and I will again go back to my initial comments when we first started talking about the gatekeeper project is projects, is that we are fully cognizant of of difficult decisions when you have many worthy projects that offer many admirable community benefits. But when it came down to really two reasons for this recommendation. One is that we really truly believe that if we're to continue with the central Redwood City visioning process, that that would be very difficult to do with all of these large, rather large, commercial and mixed use projects initiated at the same time. They, and and then also related to, as discussed in the staff report, there are the resources to be able to do both long range planning and to initiate all five or larger than two number now that that we have made the motion and initiation for the three residential projects. To do beyond that, we we could not continue with the long range planning for central Redwood City at this time. What I would recommend is if there is council interest and certainly initiation of more than five or more than two of the commercial projects, that again, we will come back to you in the early part of twenty twenty one. And we would develop a resource plan as to how we would pause uh the primary aspects of planning for Central Redwood City and instead direct our resources to the development projects. Next slide, please. Oh, I apologize, clerk, if we could go back. Um, briefly, it's noted in the staff report. And again, as many of you have noted, this is a project initiation, not a project review uh for action and thereby the staff recommendation um for the two recommended projects uh is is not based on in a typical zoning cord, zoning code references or standards, but rather what we feel are really um exceptional community benefits and/or the strategic location of a site. So that, we're happy to discuss that um more. Um, but that was the general basis for this recommendation. We also discussed other paths for the other projects, the three that are listed under not initiate, that um we would encourage the developers and the applicants to be a part of the long-range planning process and hopefully uh has that has, you know, been done in the past, that that's a possibility that those projects in some way could be um incorporated or at least considered as we're going through a community planning process for a larger planning area. Next slide, please. So again, the alternatives um remain the same. The alternative number five should not be on there for this particular conversation. So it's the same um options, certainly open to council to not take any action, to have us come back if you feel that a developer or the staff has not provided enough uh information, in which case we can come back to a future meeting. Um, initiate or deny any combination of the projects while keeping it to five and allowing the Central Redwood City planning process to continue or to initiate more than those and defer the consideration of the Central Redwood City plan. Again, we would come back to you with um with a resource plan and I would hope that that could be in the early part of uh twenty twenty-one that would allow us to process some other projects uh in the next few months and get them um for council for a decision. So with that, uh, we can go to city council questions and that concludes this portion of the presentation. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Um, okay, I see councilmember Bain has his hand raised. Councilmember, did you have a question?
Yes, thank you, Vice Mayor Mazur. Um, the question is about item number three on the previous list. Um, in terms of, this seems to be a binary choice in terms of initiating or denying projects. And I want to get a little better sense of that. If it, if we initiate these, uh, they go forward immediately with study. And if we deny these, um, there's a period of two years before they can resubmit. Is that correct?
That is correct, councilmember. Um, you know, they, the project could be modified to conform to the general plan or the zoning ordinance. But yes, if it were to be denied, there's a a two-year period. Also, there's a two-year timeframe for an initiated project to file formal applications with the city. So they're both two years initiation, non-initiation.
Okay, you mentioned another option, which I'm trying to understand where this falls, but uh it would be aligning with the uh Central Redwood City Plan.
Right. I'm sorry, go ahead.
Eh eh, well, I'm just sort of trying to understand. If we deny a project and it aligns with the Central Redwood City Plan, uh, and that, let's say hypothetically, the Central Redwood City Plan comes back within two years, could that project then be considered at that time?
It could be if the if the plan is completed in that amount of time. You know, as outlined in the previous presentation, we think that it will be minimally a two-year process to develop a plan for Central Redwood City. So that's why we're saying that it's based on that timeline, that we think that if we can have a plan and, you know, define new districts and uses and and design standards, that if a project was part of that conversation with the community, the council and the staff, that the project could be um modified in such a way so that it met the the intentions of the new Central Redwood City Plan.
So let me um, let me see if I can phrase this the right way. Is there a middle ground whereby if a project we don't feel is quite uh at a hundred percent right now for initiation could be considered sometime between now and two years? Because that seems like a pretty stark choice. So for example, could we continue a project for a period of time and have them resubmit and then reconsider at that time, even if that's before the Central Redwood City Plan has been adopted?
I believe, and I will ask for guidance from the city attorney, I believe we could change uh on the resolution, if I'm understanding you correctly, to change it to one year or to some other uh timeframe other than two years and that that would allow for a project to come back. You know, also too, the project could be, you know, substantially changed in that timeframe. And, you know, that's something that we could certainly um take a look at. I think the reality is this, that most of them are, you know, generally speaking, they're certainly their uses and their density to a large degree have to be, you know, generally what they have proposed, but there's an opportunity there. So um, Ms. Ramirez, I don't know if you have, if you want to clarify.
And and be before you answer that question, Ms. Ramirez, I'll tell you a little bit where I'm coming from, just to kind of help frame uh the discussion. You know, the gatekeeper process has been compared to a beauty contest and and there are always runners-up. And because we are in such an unpredictable um volatile economy right now with with numerous unknowns, one of these projects or more could drop out. Let's say we approve two projects uh tonight for initiation. Uh, then, you know, we may want to consider one of the other projects if neither one of those moves forward. So that's part of the reason why I'm asking the question.
Thank you, councilmember Bain. Um, and Mr. Munzer, I mean, I, you answered it exactly right. I will say, councilmember Bain, that um the two-year time limitation that's built into the resolutions is fabricated. Um, it's something that staff has set forth in order to ensure that we don't keep getting multiple requests for a general plan amendment when you've already said no. Um, so if this is really a not at this time, the city council can choose not to put any timeframe on it or to put a one-year timeframe on it or really to decide not to act at all. One of your alternatives is don't act. And um and and instead give really clear direction to the developer on when you'd like to revisit their project. So this is really something that's available for the council uh as you think through. By initiating or not initiating, by adopting the two resolutions, you're being very clear right now with the staff's recommendation that either they get initiated and must move forward within two years or they do not get initiated and cannot move forward as proposed for two years. But definitely within uh the council's uh discretion how they'd like to move these forward.
That's very helpful. Thank you. Those are my questions.
Thank you. Uh, councilmember Aguirre?
Thank you. You know, I looked at the gatekeeper project as something that was moving forward a little bit faster than what we're proposing. And I I'm thinking that, you know, we have the flexibility, determining the clarity and need a definition and what, we really want developers to come back. But uh, two years is, it takes four years for any of this to happen. And I don't want to wait two years for a gatekeeper project. I'm thinking that we should push some of these forward and look at six months and not two years to bring this back, to really look at what we're doing and have some clarity, no ambiguity, is it low-income versus low-income? I agree with staff recommendations, but I'd like to see this come back in six months and look at Gatekeeper Project two point O. When we set this Gatekeeper Project forward, we're looking at something quicker, not something that's going to go into the Central Redwood City project, which will take another three or four years. So I'm proposing that we move some of these forward and look at six months to come back and look at what this looks like. A lot of things are changing, the recession, the economy, COVID. But what can we do in the next six months that will really change this and bring some projects that will really make Redwood City a better housing for low, very low, all of the issues of parking, veterans, disability that were brought forward this evening? So I'm, I'm really trying to be a little bit more progressive and say, how can we do this in six months? Let's not wait. Let's ask our developers to come work with us and bring something forward a little bit quicker. Thank you.
Okay, um, thank you. Um, and then councilmember Hale, I I'd want to just clarify that we haven't opened the public hearing yet. So if we have some additional questions, let's take those. But then I think we should need to open the public hearing. So councilmember Hale?
Thank you, Vice Mayor, uh, for the clarification. I do have a question. May I proceed?
Yeah, of course.
Okay, great, thank you. I want to thank my colleagues. Those were great questions. As this process unfolds, to help us understand what our options are, I wanted to um feel out a third option, which is, it seems like the most gating factor to um moving forward some of these projects is staff capacity. We have heard, I don't know how many times in the last several months uh from members of the community, how much they want affordable housing prioritized and they want to see that reflected in the budget. And so um this would, in essence, be a way of unlocking affordable housing um by having resources that would um allow that, allow these projects to move forward. And so I do understand we have the budget process coming up as well. And I'm wondering if uh we could address the staffing shortage through that process to better understand um what we would need uh to provide. I know we've already recently provided resources. Um, I recall um signing off on resources to provide contract positions and and so the public knows these are roles that the developers pay for. They actually pay for the contractors. Also, you know, I'm wondering if developers would be interested in paying for these other additional resources. So I want to understand what's possible there. I do think that these are two separate needs, but they're both in our top three priorities of housing and transportation. And of course, this is literally transit-oriented housing, so it's a bonus. But um there are elements of the transit district that are important for us to continue with, uh, like grade separation, for example. And yet here we have this really um fantastic housing opportunity. So I I don't know if um perhaps the city manager could speak to that, but how could this get worked into the budgeting process?
Yeah, and I see our city manager has her hand up. Thanks for that question.
Yes, thank you very much. And again, my apologies as well for not having the the photo properly aligned this evening. So um the community development director, Mark, and I have been discussing this at at some length and thinking about, you know, what the timeframe would be if the council wanted to consider more than two of the mixed-use um projects. And as you know, at your next city council meeting, we'll be discussing the significant financial constraints that we're under in light of the recession, which are really going to require that we actually not fill a number of vacant positions and make some hard decisions about prioritizing staff time. Um, and as Mark indicated earlier, if the council wanted to think about more than two mixed-use projects, it would be early in twenty twenty-one before we'd actually be able to bring a resource plan to you. And that's just because, if you'll recall that slide that had all the the colorful bars across it, there is a huge workload that's already underway, that is scheduled for city council discussion in the next several months. And we're committed on those things that you've asked us to to work on at this point. As staff, we want to say yes. We we want to be able to tell you that it's possible to to do all of this and we have been racking our brains, thinking that you might want to advance, you know, more projects. But in addition to the staff constraints, I think another way to think about this really is uh the impact that it has on the planning commission's agendas, city council agendas, um, the opportunities and constraints around community engagement associated with a large number of projects. And so as difficult as it was to make a recommendation to limit the number and to limit it for a period of two years, that really comes from, you know, deeply understanding what it takes, both on our end, which, you know, doesn't matter to a lot of folks and shouldn't, but also what it takes on the council's end, on the planning commission's end, on the community's end, to be able to consider these large and complex projects. So the best we could do would be to come in early in twenty twenty-one to suggest some other ways of um perhaps phasing consideration of additional projects beyond two. But we need to be realistic and say, given what else is already happening that we've been asked to work on, we we don't think that we could advance them uh more quickly. Uh, certainly than than a year, and we don't think we could advance them more than two and and still do a responsible job of a community visioning process.
Thank you. So it does sound like there is a path there. I think I share a concern that was expressed by, I I'm sorry, I don't recall which colleague, but there's such market volatility right now that um we don't actually know what will make it further in the process. And so sort of having a larger top of funnel um is attractive in many ways. And then I did want to ask a question as well about the SEQA analysis. So my understanding is that we'll be able to bundle a lot of the analysis for these projects because they're in proximity um to each other. Is that accurate? So the whole, the whole community involvement in that that could be, could be bundled?
Uh, councilmember Hale, depends on where, if I may. Um, it depends on, you know, which projects are uh initiated and their location to one another. So some of them have synergies just by virtue of 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 how they may be co-located and thereby have uh impacts and mitigations that um could be bundled and could be studied together. So, you know, in terms of, you know, the amount of traffic, uh, the impacts to ped bike, the impacts to city infrastructure, both street and underground. A lot of that could be studied um at the same time, but it's it's definitely one of those things that depends on which projects, depends on where they're located, the timing of them. All of that would play into it, but yes, high level, generally speaking, that's correct.
That's great. So there could be some economies of scale and.
Potentially.
Yeah. And I did want to just clarify one more thing, which is that I did mention that developers pay for staff costs, but my understanding is that the staffing resources, they work for the city, not the developers. Is that correct?
My apologies with my mic. Certainly. So it's called cost recovery and the city or consultant staff time is charged back to the developer for the hours that are worked on that project. Those consultants work at the direction of the city. Uh, and city staff, which is part of the 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 issue at play here, even when there's a consultant that is overseeing a large-scale project, that requires a significant amount of uh oversight by a city staff member.
Okay, and so uh and just, I I want to just really put a fine point on this, a concept of this studying together. That's what we did for the DTPP, right? We studied it together. And so every project in the downtown area could be studied together, um, just as we've done in the past.
Uh, yes, it was uh as part of the downtown precise plan. Likely though, that would be part of, you know, the Central Redwood City process, that the Central Redwood City process would do this cumulative study that includes environmental, we would study the caps and then we could see, you know, which projects would fit uh under those caps, whatever that may, whatever that decision may be as to what they would uh ultimately end up being from either a dwelling unit count or from a square footage, if you're talking about uh commercial.
Okay, I have no more questions. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Uh, councilmember Borgans, do you have questions?
I just have one quick question um for Mark. I think this is for you. Earlier, you mentioned that there's also a list of anticipated projects out here that we get. Is there the opportunity to tell anticipated projects that they have to wait? Because we have enough going on?
Well, I mean, um, likely not in the long term because those anticipated projects meet the general plan and oftentimes the zoning. So um there's really not an option for us to to delay their their study. Of course, it's resources and it's how do they fit in there, but we know, we can't tell them no.
Yeah, but what if they do require to have more? I, would they do require more attention? Do you have the opportunity to say no?
No, not not long term. If somebody has the the ability and do not need a general plan amendment or a zoning amendment, then we have an obligation to um process that application. But to my previous point, of course, it depends on, you know, quote-unquote, when we can get to it and 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 we put it into the queue and and that's how we we um identify what resources are needed to process the application. But to answer your question, we can't tell them, no, we won't process your application.
Councilmember, does that answer your question?
Yes and no, but it's okay. Thank you.
Okay, well, you'll have another opportunity after the public hearing. So if there's no more council questions, I'm going to move to the public hearing. Uh, we still have quite a few people on the line, so I'm imagining several of them want to speak. I see people raising their hands. I'm going to give you about thirty seconds to raise your hands, given the hour. And I'm going to ask everybody to keep their comments to no more than two minutes. I, right now, looking like close to twenty speakers, uh, possibly more. All right, last. All right, last call to raise your hand to speak on a project. My last speaker is RC, and we won't take any more speakers after RC. So I will start with Anne Bariafa.
Yeah, yeah. Um Vice Mayor Mazer, we also want to remind you, there's developers who would like to make public comment as well. There's three of them.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Okay, let's um let's do as we did in the previous section. We can do the developers first and then we will, I see we have four developers. And then we will take uh the um the pan, the uh attendees. And we're still, though, the last person has already raised their hand on the um on the attendees. Okay. So for developers, we will start with Henry Sears. And Henry, you'll have two minutes.
Good evening. My name is Henry Sears with Tishman Spire. We in Mid Penn are proud of our proposal for the Chase Bank property in six oh nine Price Avenue. Our proposal includes eighty affordable homes at six oh nine price. This represents the most homes at the deepest levels of affordability of any gatekeeper proposal. Many of these homes would be family sized with two and three bedrooms that would be truly affordable to local families. That means low, very low, extremely low income and section eight voucher home units, all with holistic onsite services to those residents. With the limited staff resources in mind, the six oh nine price project could move forward as part of the Central Redwood City Plan if the Chase Bank site can move forward with a general plan amendment. This would allow us to move forward with the purchase of six oh nine price, which is a near term opportunity we have to make a decision on in the near term. It also allows for the possibility that the site could be entitled in a streamlined fashion under state housing legislation currently under consideration. The project is also willing to contribute additional funds to help with staffing to jumpstart the Central Redwood visioning process. In addition, we are proud to offer to build out and operate over twenty thousand square feet of new green space as part of the Hamilton Green and Redwood Grove, directly adjacent to the Courthouse Square. This would create a unique opportunity for community led place making that will benefit generations of Redwood City residents who spend time downtown, all at no ongoing cost to the city. Mid Penn and Tishman Spire are committed to be flexible, collaborative, and to continue to work as a true partner to the Redwood City community if we're able to move forward. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Uh John Fong.
Thank you, Vice Mayor and Council. City Council is making critical decisions tonight about downtown that will have a lasting impact on behalf of the community. You define the three main priorities that future developments in the downtown should address. And tonight, through staff's leadership, you have before you a crowded field of serious proposals. I don't envy your situation, but I am inspired that you have energized the development community. The conversations you framed have resulted in five mixed use proposals, including our Autozone project that provides meaningful community benefits, including a significant number of affordable housing units. These proposed projects are all better due to your guidance. My team and I have been particularly compelled to create something special. This excitement has grown over many months. We learned about the sobering yet uplifting story of how the community helped many Japanese American farmers get back on their feet, falling in tournament. The story we want to tell in Crescenton Plaza. We've gone to understand from the teen advisory board about how today's teens in Redwood City see themselves and their place in this community. We listened to the call by council and the community to propose a project that maximizes the amount of affordable housing that we can provide by bringing in twenty five twenty nine Broadway. The sixty units, two thirds of which will be family sized, two, three, and four bedrooms. And two thirty, two thirds of the homes will be at extremely low and very low income levels, which means these will serve households with incomes between thirty five and eighty five thousand. We maximize this property and it's highly unlikely that the transit district process will look more affordable at units than we can provide right now. Council, thank you for your excellent leadership in creating this conversation about the future of development in downtown.
Thank you so much. Uh next, we have Michael Hallow.
All right, thanks, everybody. This is going to be less eloquent than the uh first two developers speaking, but just taking some notes. You know, for me, the uh our study session a few weeks ago was a was a learning experience. You know, I heard about openness to doing offsite. Um I heard about focus on more bedrooms. I heard that tonight as well. Um and so our hope was to take that information and put together uh a a project, uh keep the conversation going, um work together to get something out there that's that's awesome for the community. Um that's all. So we we had put out seven and a half million dollars allocated to affordable. We're by far the smallest project out here amongst these five, and so it's really inefficient for us to do it on site. So maybe um what I referenced too on our last call was doing fifteen offsite or or even doing something, you know, more more creative um that can make a bitter, a bigger dent or or a better dent. Um and uh so anyways, my my goal would be, you know, not to have to wait to two years to to have that conversation or one year or whatever, um because, you know, I'm I'm here every day and I I feel like our problems are 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 now and and um the more we can talk and and keep the conversation going, uh that's a good thing, especially if it's going to take a few years to to um to run through this process. That's all. All right. Thanks, everybody. Bye.
Thank you. Peter Tsai.
Hi, uh can everyone hear me?
Yes, we can.
All right. Thank you, everybody. Uh thank you, Mark Munzer. Uh thank you, Anna McGill, William Chu, for all your work on this process. I'm joined tonight uh by John Baker uh from the Redwood City School District, Mark Finninger from Studio's Architecture. Sabrato is excited to partner with the Redwood City School District on this project. Together, we plan on bringing workforce housing for the school district staff and teachers, as well as office, to the downtown in Redwood City. This underserved part of the community would benefit from becoming part of the community. Um and if initiated, we look forward to engaging the community further on bringing uh teachers and staff to downtown Redwood City. Thank you.
Thank you, Peter. Um, okay, I am going to move to a public comment. I'm going to encourage everyone to follow Peter's lead and do less than two minutes if you can. Right now, we have thirty six public uh comments. And that with, at two minutes, that takes us well past eleven for public comment, and that's still going to be prior to council discussion. So um I will start with um Anne Bariafa. Anne, I, there you go.
Everybody, thank you so much. Um so I am a teacher in the Redwood City School District, and I've been here for almost thirty years. When I started back in the early nineties, the housing was affordable. As a single um teacher, I could afford to live here with no problem, even on the lower end of the pay scale. Um fortunately, when I got married, my husband had just bought a home in San Carlos, so we've been able to afford living here. I have to say, even though now I'm at the higher end of the pay scale, I can barely afford to live here. We live month to month. Um my main concern, however, is for the newer teachers. We lose so many wonderful teachers every single year and uh because they can't afford to live here. Uh the the pricing is just outrageous. Um I want to make sure that we have something for these teachers uh in the future. And having this housing project would be a huge asset, not only to our district, but to our community, because we would be able to keep these very wonderful qualified teachers and staff in the Redwood City School District. So thank you.
Thank you, Anne. Tony Gappitone. I won't use the mayor's um flair. Tony, go ahead.
This is Tony Gappitone, yes, also known as Tony Capastione. Thank you so much. I am from Brave Maker. And I just wanted to put a good word in and say thank you to Michael from Premia and just endorse the work that he's doing and the proposal he has as a nonprofit in Redwood City and a Redwood City resident for the past twenty three years. I too, uh like the former call in person, uh struggle to live and survive in a space uh in the arts, in the city that I love so much, that I want so badly for a city to be a sustainable place for people to live. Uh I have three kids, I have a teacher for a wife, and the proposal of um Premia, what they're doing, not only what they're building for affordable housing, but the fact that they're leveraging that space for community organizations like mine, for Brave Maker, for our arts and film screenings, and all their pickleball uh pitch that they're putting down in their building in Allerton there. I just really appreciate. Uh Premia's been one of the very handful, few handfuls of organizations or companies in Redwood City that's actually given back to us as a nonprofit. And I know they do so much for other organizations in our city, and I wanted to put a good word in for them. So that's my two cents. Thanks for all you do, everybody.
Great. Thank you so much. Kita Dev and Kita's going to be followed by Kate Comfort Har.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Mazer. Uh this is Kita Dev with the Sierra Club. I I simply want to make um a very interesting point that I observed. Uh in the housing thing, we we have three housing projects that we're looking at, which come to about not quite eight hundred units. In the office buildings, every single one of them, you know, let's say Wells Fargo One, two hundred thousand square feet, that generates a need for a thousand units right there. They're providing eighty. And now the next one, Chase is a hundred and seventy thousand, that generates eight hundred and fifty units. They're providing sixty eight. I just want to make the point that we have a real jobs housing imbalance in the whole bay, in the whole peninsula. Redwood City has not been the worst. There have been other cities that are much worse. However, we've been trying to maintain a jobs housing balance. And I res- I see that housing is our top priority. I just want to point out that every one of these office buildings sets us actually farther behind on the housing front, because these employees will displace, they can afford, they can afford to displace a lot of other people. That's the only point I want to make. Um when the Sequoia ha- uh station house, uh office building was proposed, we wrote the letters, you know, documenting how far in the hole we already were on housing. And so I just want to point that out, that the jobs housing balance is something that we take very seriously, and I hope everyone takes very seriously. So when we look at office projects versus housing projects, it takes four times as much space to live as it does to work. You can have a hundred square foot of office, but not live in a four hundred square foot house. Thank you.
Thank you. Kate Comfort Har, followed by DZ. Kate, you're still on mute. Kate, can you, there you go.
Thank you. Yeah, I was having trouble with with the technology. So this is Kate Comfort Har of Hip Housing. I'm also a longtime Redwood City resident. I want to thank council for creating this gatekeeper process to allow really great developments to move forward in a timely manner. I am super excited about nineteen hundred Broadway and seven fifty Bradford being recommended, as I feel both projects are a great value to Redwood City. But I'd also like to advocate for one more great project, and that's nine oh one El Camino, which includes twenty five twenty nine Broadway, for which Hip Housing would be a property manager for. I've submitted more formal comments for your review, so tonight I just want to reiterate that due to a variety of seller and other constraints, bumping this project out, the timing of it, would essentially kill the project. As a local affordable housing developer, I know how hard these projects are to put together. Kensington Ventures has done a phenomenal job of surpassing the city's preferences for providing affordable housing for families and has also provided a project of wonderful cultural relevance with desperately needed teen center on transit. As a housing advocate, I love this project, but as a twenty five year resident, I also love it. And I believe it would transform otherwise underutilized parcels into something beautiful. I urge you to add nine oh one El Camino alongside nineteen hundred Broadway and seven fifty Bradford as projects recommended to move forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Kate. DZ, followed by Cindy Stokes.
Great. Thank you. Uh I live in downtown Redwood City. My name is Diego Zembrano. I'm a supporter of all of these projects. In addition to the magnificent housing benefits, I also want to emphasize something that we haven't talked about, which is the benefits of having office and commercial space uh for foot traffic that feeds our local businesses, retail, and restaurants. We're seeing a a lot of businesses closed down during the pandemic, and they're saying there isn't enough foot traffic in downtown Redwood City. And that's not just because of COVID. I mean, the Brick Monkey Building next to the Downtown Plaza was vacant for two years. When you have commercial space, you have office workers having lunch, having dinner, spending in retail here in Redwood City. So it benefits our restaurants and it benefits our small businesses. That's not the same, and of course, we should emphasize housing, but that's not always true for housing. I work in Palo Alto. I eat my lunch there. I eat my dinner there, and I spend a lot of money there. So I I think that's an added benefit that we're not considering. And that is a long term benefit that we should think about. And just briefly, I want to say that you really should not let staffing capacity be the reason why you don't approve this. I mean, I could understand many other reasons, but as Councilmember Hale said, the developers are paying for the additional staff. The city manager did not, his answer did not seem to address that. Please do not let that be the reason why we don't have these amazing projects. And we keep delaying year after year the need for housing and commercial space. Thank you.
Thank you. Cindy Stokes, followed by Lisa Hicks Dumansky.
Hi, good evening. My name is Cindy Stokes, and I've lived in Redwood City for seven years. The very positive response to recently developed public art and the successful establishment of experiential arts related options like music on the square, all of our theaters and the Chalk Festival all speak to the community's interest and need for the arts. As the next step, it's time for Redwood City to establish a permanent facility for the arts in downtown. Significant research demonstrates that access to the arts in a community empowers children for future success, supports significant economic development, and promotes community cohesion. Art unites generations, empowers citizens, and increases participation in civic issues. With a large number of developments under consideration, I'm so glad that the city is considering how each proposed development provides a community focused benefit. Opportunity abounds in this planning to include a permanent facility for for the arts, a center for creativity, if you will. It would be a destination for instruction, practice of, and experience of the visual arts, performance, music, and more for the entire community. Children and youth are a major priority for the city, and arts education for them has been decimated in the schools. A public center for creativity could fill the massive gap that has developed. Since the purpose of tonight is to move projects to further study, there is still time to figure out how to fit in a center for creativity as an exceptional community benefit within one or distributed distributed across several of these developments. To discuss vision and scope, I'd encourage developers, the city, and anyone interested to contact Arts Redwood City, a longstanding community arts group, at the following email, which is A R T S R W C at gmail dot com. Thank you.
Thank you. Lisa Hicks Dumansky, followed by Paul Nowort.
Thank you. Um my name is Lisa Hicks Dumansky, and I'm the executive director of the Redwood City Library Foundation. And I am um I'm I am speaking tonight on behalf of one of the projects for Premia. Mike Hallow is the founder of Premia, and it is for the six oh one Allerton project. And I have heard and understand the comments and limitations that are, have been presented tonight, so I don't want to appear tone deaf. But I am urging the council to initiate continued review of the project at six oh one Allerton. Um Premia has been an amazing uh community partner in Redwood City for a long time. They've been an amazing community partner with a library. They've um but as both donors to our Bridging the Digital Divide program and also just as patrons. And uh they're community partners with many other service is other organ, other nonprofits in our community. And I have reviewed their project, and it is a small project, um but they have a huge commitment to affordable housing and also for family space. So this this uh, the rooftop pickleball court was an amazing addition, I thought, for families. So other, for families and also workers in Redwood City, to be able to come to downtown Redwood City and do something together besides just eat or go to the movies. So we were um I, just as a resident and also as a worker in Redwood City, I was uh just, I just thought it was a great proposal, a great project, and um also had very strong affordable housing and benefits to the community. So I would urge the city council to initiate continued review of the project at six oh one Allerton. Thank you.
Thank you, Lisa. Paul Nowort, followed by Carol Mark.
Thanks so much, Vice Mayor. Uh, I had a comment on the nine oh one El Camino Real site, the Autozone Project. I'm speaking this evening as a Redwood City resident since two thousand thirteen, uh, and as a historian in training. I'm doing my PhD right now. Uh, some of my main research areas have been on race, community and land use in the Bay Area. My research work has included a focus on local community history of Redwood City's deep history of Japanese-American community and commercial cut flower cultivation, uh, with global importance for our area running back to the first decade of the twentieth century. And I think that the Autozone Site Project highlights this important history. Uh, after learning more about this project, uh, from John Fung's team, I'd like to voice my support uh, as a resident and a historian, pardon me, for this project moving forward. Because of my research in these areas, uh, John Fung and some of his colleagues at Kensington Ventures reached out over the summer to ask for feedback on the design they plan, uh, at the Autozone Project Site, uh, specifically the Chrysanthemum Plaza feature. And I think this project does a good job of helping Redwood City progress and addressing some questions of equity, historic social justice that are central and major questions we've been having as a city this past year. Been impressed with the way John's team has been committed to centering important local history of Asian-American community and agricultural history, particularly in the Chrysanthemum Plaza future, uh, feature, pardon me. Um, their design has been thoughtful. They've taken seriously that their design work involves public history and memorialization. And I think their project can build on other recent efforts to lift up this history and start to better highlight it in our community, including the recent mural at Roosevelt Plaza. Um, and I've also been very impressed, uh, and applaud the emphasis on affordable housing within their proposal. So thank you so much and I hope the city moves forward, uh, with support for the Autozone Project.
Thank you. Carol Mark, followed by Shannon Petrello.
My, hi, my name is Carol Mark and I am a middle school English teacher at Clifford and an executive board member of the Redwood City Teachers Association. I'm speaking in favor of an agenda item eight A, making housing available for our workforce. To state the obvious, Bay Area housing has become prohibitive on a teacher's salary and that Redwood City must be competitive in recruiting high-quality, talented teachers. Yes, so providing affordable housing to new teachers or teachers in subjects that are harder to fill can only be a good thing. It's certainly an investment in our children and their education. Arguably, a community is only as good as its schools and a school district is only as good as its teachers. Redwood City is not among the higher-paying school districts in the peninsula. However, providing affordable housing will offset that and provide a great incentive to draw talented teachers. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Carol. Um, before we move on to the next speaker, Shannon, you will be next, but I did just want to say that if you are on this call for the ADU discussion, uh, we're gonna need to postpone that. Um, and for my council colleagues, we're just checking to see if we need a motion to do that or not. I'm gonna go ahead and let Shannon speak and then we'll come back to you if we need a motion to postpone the ADU discussion. Go ahead, Shannon.
Thanks. Um, good evening, honorable members of the council. My name is Shannon Petrello and I'm the Board President of the Redwood City Education Foundation. Um, while it's our policy not to take positions on development projects, we wanted to speak tonight about our partnership with Premia Capital and how their support has aided some of our district's community members. In mid-August, RCEF launched our back-to-school campaign to provide mental health counseling, school supplies and Wi-Fi access to the sixteen hundred students at Hoover, Garfield and Taft Schools. RCEF connected with Mike Hollow from Premia Capital to ask for modest support in the range of fifteen to twenty thousand dollars. Totally unprompted, Mike offered to underwrite half the total goal amount of the campaign. Their one hundred and twenty-five thousand dollar gift is the largest gift RCEF has received in a single year in our thirty-seven-year history. As I said, RCEF does not take a position on whether council should or should not approve projects, but we do feel it's important that those who seek to do business in Redwood City give back to our community in a meaningful way. And this is exactly what Premia Capital has done. Thank you.
Thank you, Shannon. Uh, next speaker is Laura Regis and then followed by phone number six five oh two, sorry, to put my glasses on to read this, six five oh two eight three six three five seven. Laura, go ahead.
Good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes, I can. Thank you.
Wonderful. Thanks for the opportunity to speak. Uh, my name is Laura Regis and I'm the Senior Vice President of Real Estate Development for Abode Communities. We are a nonprofit, mission-driven, affordable housing developer and one of the development partners along with Hip Housing, Kensington Ventures and the Minkoff Group for the proposed mixed-use development at nine oh one El Camino Real and twenty-five, twenty-nine Broadway. And we submitted for the public record a letter earlier in the day with more info about Abode Communities and the proposed affordable housing component, which I hope the council members will have a chance to read. Um, what I want to share with you this evening is why this project is so important to me on a more personal level. Um, you know, having spent the majority of my career focused on the development of affordable housing for low-income families, seniors and others with special needs, uh, it's because I'm passionate about the opportunities that it creates for these residents. Um, the twenty-five, twenty-nine Broadway site has actually been owned for decades by members of my extended family who operated a very successful event rental business at this location for many years. And the time has come to transition that property to the next chapter and I'm excited about the opportunity here. Um, this really is an extraordinary and unique moment for my family to be able to contribute to the city's well-being in a new way at the site by facilitating the development of much-needed affordable housing for families for, you know, at least the next fifty years. And you can imagine an intersection of opportunity like this rarely comes along. Uh, because of its outstanding location with proximity to all the great amenities and services as well as access to transit, this is really a rare opportunity and I can say with confidence, due to the fair market value of this Broadway property, were it, were it not for the innovative mixed-use project that is being proposed here in the adjacent sites as well, this site just would not be financially feasible for the development of affordable housing. So I want to sincerely encourage the council to, um, consider this opportunity in time and vote to include the project in the Gatekeeper Initiative. Thanks so much.
Thank you. All right, um, so six five oh two eight three. It sounds like you've been muted yourself and then after you will be Lance Fung. Go ahead. You've remuted yourself. There you go.
Hi, this is Tehan Bari. I'm the owner of Sicles McCafe in downtown Redwood City. I do love all the density projects. I think that, um, someone named Diego spoke to small businesses, small local businesses who are feeling the effect of not a lot of foot traffic. But I definitely wanted to speak to, uh, like a smaller boutique, um, project like the Premia Project six oh one Allerton. Um, I know that the developers are literally in Redwood City, if not every day, at least five days a week, I see them walking through the city. And I just think that being a resident of Redwood City, owning a small business in Redwood City, sometimes you have to give to the, to the possibly smaller or more boutique developers, but they have a bit more skin in the game because they're with the boots on the ground. They're actually seeing the city, seeing the changes, seeing and talking to the local businesses and kind of the needs that, um, are addressed by, um, actually physically being in the downtown area. Um, I do love that there is affordable housing, there's workforce housing, which is incredibly important for me, who needs to hire people who are, you know, low to medium skilled in order to have our, my business succeed. And then the fact that there's more community space, um, that is just something that I've always loved about Redwood City. No matter what your disposable income is, there was always something to do as a family or just as, as entertainment. And I just really love that that's one more addition, that's a little bit more, um, community-minded and a little bit outside of the box, actually, um, that will get people to kind of come down and, and be another attractive, um, asset. So I just really wanted to speak in support of that project and also love that the extension of the downtown district is becoming bigger. So our city is becoming a bit more walkable and a bit more viable as a destination. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Lance Fung, followed by Alex Melendrez.
Uh, hello, everyone. Um, my name is Lance Fung and I'm the curator of the Art Kiosk located at Cordova Square. Uh, our nonprofit is partnered with the city and funded primarily by RCIA to bring monthly art exhibitions to the community for free. The public artworks are viewed, um, viewed day and night. And I wanted to say that I think all of the projects are fantastic and one in particular affects us. It's a twenty-three hundred Broadway project, the Chase Manhattan Bank. We are in super favor of the project, particularly the twenty thousand square foot Hamilton Green, which ultimately would be providing the city the necessary downtown park that the Park Precise Plan was seeking. The other idea is we've been loosely in conversation with Tishman Spire, who are huge art supporters and patrons in the idea of expanding the Art Chaos Program onto the green space. So that our little fourteen by fourteen by fourteen foot space could have a much broader area outdoor work that's accessible, touchable, sitable, uh, with changing, uh, temporary and permanent projects. We also want to encourage Tishman Spire to consider the possibility of an exhibition venue. It's something that I think if they had the time to go forward, rather than being chopped off too soon, uh, we can craft out something that might benefit the city. I know the Arts Redwood City Group and others really want some sort of art center. So I don't know if this is a space, but it might be yet a bigger toehold than our little art kiosk. So thank you for considering that project and I hope that it can go forward, at least in the design and planning stages.
Thank you, Lance. Um, and Alex, just before you talk, uh, for my colleagues, uh, we don't need a formal motion to postpone the ADU discussion. We're also going to be postponing, um, council reports, but at this moment, I would like to take a motion to extend the meeting. I'm gonna say until eleven thirty, so if I could have a motion to do that.
Janet. Second, Alicia.
Thank you, Janet. Thank you, Alicia. Uh, Pam, do we need to do a roll call for that? Or can we just do it all?
We, we do. We do have to take a roll call vote. Let's start with Councilmember Bain.
Yes.
Councilmember Borgans.
Yes.
Councilmember Hale.
Yes.
Councilmember Ready.
Yes.
Councilmember Aguirre.
Yes.
And Vice Mayor Mesa.
Yes.
The motion passes with six votes.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Okay, Alex, sorry to keep you waiting. Go ahead.
Uh, good evening, Redwood City City Council. Uh, again, Alex Melendrez, organizer with the Housing Leadership Council of San Mateo County. So Redwood City has been a leader in housing in San Mateo County, uh, as we saw earlier in the first part of this gatekeeper process. Uh, because the city council has prioritized housing, particularly affordable housing as its top priority. Uh, this meeting is the urgent moment for council, for staff, for the city to not just confirm, but to redouble that commitment. Uh, our ask for the city of Redwood City is to prioritize proposals mentioned here that provide more affordable housing with the greatest number of bedrooms at the deepest levels of affordability. Uh, there is an unstated impact on the number of bedrooms, uh, regardless of the number counts in Rena, as, as Councilmember, Councilmember Hale said, what's left out is the number of people that are functionally housed in affordable housing. Uh, that needs to be taken into consideration. Looking at the downtown precise plan, we could see that it, uh, left quite a hole in the need to fill affordable housing and I don't believe that's something, uh, we need to repeat. And at the end of the day, affordable housing doesn't get built without somebody to pay for it and without sites being secured. Both are difficult to do. The opportunity for that is here and now, uh, and that translates to housing people. Uh, we don't believe that the current list, uh, limited listed, uh, uh, moving forward, uh, proposals moving forward truly reflect uh, the council's values. And we know that the council will show leadership in supporting more affordable homes, more families, more communities. We appreciate your time and staff time spent on this long and difficult process and want to wish Councilmember Bain a happy birthday.
Thank you. Thanks for, thanks for the public wish for Councilmember Bain. Uh, so uh, next I have Kent Mansky, followed by Nisha, Nisha Mascherani. Kent, go ahead. You just need to unmute yourself.
Greetings, council members. Greetings, council members. For the last two years, the organization Arts Redwood City, in conjunction with the Redwood City Parks and Art Foundation, developed a comprehensive vision for a center for creativity here in Redwood City. We worked closely with Chris Beth and former Redwood City Economic Development Manager, Don Burris, to fine-tune our proposal. In March twenty twenty, the pandemic put on hold our public outreach campaign to garner support for a feasibility study. We delayed, knowing the city council's energy needed to focus on the public health crisis. Tonight, I seek to briefly inform city council members about the Center for Creativity. This is important to do so, so that the civic-focused center is included in one of the upcoming development projects seeking to provide public good. Here are things we know, some of which were articulated by Cindy Stokes. Art empowers children for future success. Art supports economic development. Art promotes community cohesion. And art unites generations, empowers citizens and increases participation in civic issues. I encourage positioning Redwood City as the cultural capital of the peninsula by providing families, children and youth and marginalized groups incentive and opportunity to actively engage in creative citizenship. Our vision is long-term. The Center for Creativity would be a destination, a destination for community discourse, a space that unites us as a community. It's a dynamic place to engage, participate, learn and grow together. We look forward to providing you more information about the Center for Creativity. Thank you.
Thank you. Nisha Mascherani, followed by Nevada Merriman.
Hi, I know it's late, so I'll keep my comments very brief. Um, I am generally excited about the housing included in these proposals, but I'm really worried that the amount of office space that is going to be added is not going to, uh, be proportional or commensurate to the amount of housing added. Um, I think a few speakers earlier before me have mentioned that, you know, for every office, for every amount of office space, you need a certain amount of housing. It seems like these proposals clearly don't cover that. Um, and by adding more office space without adding sufficient housing, we really risk exacerbating the already a really bad gentrification crisis we have here in Redwood City. Um, that's all I have to say. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Nisha. Nevada Merriman, followed by Cedric Von Breel. Go ahead, Nevada.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Mesa, uh, city council members and staff. I'm Nevada Merriman with Mid Penn. We have a deep track record of partnering with the city to deliver quality, affordable homes and we are thrilled at the prospect of continuing this success alongside our partner. We respectfully request to process six oh nine price under the upcoming Central Redwood City Plan. The promise of engaging in a comprehensive planning process has many upsides and we hope that a grounding principle for such a process would be to center housing equity and create affordable opportunities. However, a downside or unintended consequence is that once the site is zoned for high-density multifamily, we will be unable to purchase it because we would expect the price tag to double. Mid Penn regularly works with localities to strategically time our acquisitions and the outcome of the processes so that we have sites tied up in advance. Otherwise, they simply become out of reach. So tonight, Tishman and Mid Penn present a vision wherein Central Redwood City Plan could be grounded in equity and has affordable housing as a priority from day one. And that value is articulated because the first project that would go forward under a streamlined process that would not require a separate general plan amendment is six oh nine price. There are several state laws in play that could also simplify the planning process if passed and we are tracking them as well. We have too few opportunities to produce eighty homes at the extremely low and very low income levels for families. Furthermore, our proposal includes twenty-five percent three bedrooms. These are rare and the benefit helps more people than the production of one bedrooms by a three X factor. Should we be able to proceed, we will work collaboratively with staff and the community to refine the population we intend to serve. In two separate communities, in Belmont and also in San Mateo, we've worked with housing choices. We heard an advocate speak earlier today to include the developmentally disabled and have done so in connection with the housing authority. When we are able to bring in Section Eight vouchers, we can plan for very deep affordability.
Thank you. Thank you, Nevada. Uh, Cedric Von Breel, followed by Samantha Maloa.
Good evening, Vice Mayor Mesa and Council. Uh, my name is Cedric Von Breel, junior at Woodside High School. What's, uh, Redwood City resident. I'd like to speak on behalf of the teen center proposed as part of the Autozone Project on El Camino and Broadway. As a teen, you know, most of my life has been filled with homework and other school projects, whereas whereas we would obviously rather have it filled with fun. Now, of course, the schoolwork is essential to our education. But what if there could be an easily accessible place for teens across the city to come and do both, and so much more, all in one place? I think a teen oriented center in the proposed location would be perfect. It is close to City Hall and the hub of downtown Redwood City. You have the popular Sequoia Station featuring Caltrain Shopping Center and tons of parking. And you have the Samtrans Metro Center, just a short walk away. And let's not forget, the well attended Sequoia High School is just across the street, which allows, allows many of these students to enjoy all the fun inside without having to go far. Various ideas I've heard being floated around are that this center could be used as a learning and studying space, various conference and quiet rooms for meeting and reading, places to hold classes, play games, and just hang out with friends. Think of how beneficial that would be. I think it's great that city council and developers have chosen to listen to teens in the city and create the center for us and all those after us. Think it would be a great addition to the city and have it join the ranks of other nearby cities like Mountain View, who have a dedicated teen center of their own. I highly urge the council to go forward with the AutoZone project, as it would truly help those for the future of the city. Thanks.
Thank you Cedric. Samantha Maloa, followed by Manuel Ortiz.
Hi, thank you for taking my comment. Just to remind everybody, hi, I'm Samantha. I'm a 10 year resident. Also been having the opportunity to work in Redwood City for the past eight years. One thing that I wanted to bring up as a question, I'm really excited about all the opportunities for housing that these developments provide. But who exactly are we providing this thousands of feet of office space for? I work down at the receipt port center, I pass the Google sign. Tech is fleeing. There's offices that have been shut down from March that are gonna be continued to be shut down for at least the next year. Our small business owners, if you walk through downtown, you see so many empty places. So my question is, what are these thousands of square feet of office space going for? Is there a demand? My own business that I work for, they're going to be leaving California and pivoting to distributed work models to be somewhere else. My husband's office in Redwood Shores was shut down. 150 people are out of a job, and they've left Redwood City as well. And I know that this is just a drop in the bucket. So before we prioritize thousands of square feet for office space, I just really would like to bring up the ugly question of, do we have businesses that are actually interested in coming and renting that out? And if not, can we actually repurpose those square feet for low income housing and the housing that's truly needed? All these tech workers have left. Most of these people are not coming back to the bay. And so the need to prioritize the people that live here and want to stay here is far outweighs the needs of the businesses trying to occupy, occupy office space. Thank you.
Thank you. Manuel Ortiz, followed by Jordan Grimes. Manuel, you're still muted. You need to unmute yourself.
Let me.
There you go.
You hear me? Oh, thank you. Your, and city council members, my name is Manuel Ortiz. I'm a resident of Redwood City. I'm speaking regarding of AutoZone project. I live close to Sequoia High School. I believe we need more space for teens in this zone, so they can have place to be after school. Right now, I don't think we have enough space for teens in this, in this area. So that is why I'm in favor of AutoZone project. In my opinion, this project should move forward. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Jordan Grimes, followed by Maria Stockton.
Good evening, council members, Honorable Vice Mayor. My name is Jordan Grimes. I'm a member of Peninsula for Everyone. I'm speaking tonight to urge the council to reconsider the 2300 Broadway project. As we've heard, as part of this project, the developer is offering to double the affordable housing linkage fee that they're required to pay and purchase a site for 100% affordable housing. They would then give the site to nonprofit builder MidPenn Housing to build 80 homes at the low and very low levels of affordability, which are badly needed in Redwood City and in the county as a whole. I think this sets an important precedent for other projects. If the city wants to accept more office developments, commercial developers should be highly encouraged to go above and beyond on housing linkage fees where possible. While I understand that staff is busy and overworked, the idea that the city would pass up on an opportunity to build deeply affordable units is disconcerting. Additionally, it's my understanding that 50% of the project would be two and three bedroom units, which as discussed earlier tonight are badly needed, and would give low income and working class families the opportunity to live close to downtown, something which is, which is currently in incredibly short supply. Moreover, there are other office projects up tonight that are similarly sized and that aren't offering these benefits. And thus, the Tischman Midten combination is clearly to the best of the bunch. When you're choosing which projects to move forward and which to deny, while I enjoy pickleball, affordable housing deserves prioritization. And just lastly, as I think everyone here is aware, and a quick glance at Rena Progress will show, when the downtown precise plan moved forward years ago, revitalization of downtown was prioritized, but affordability wasn't. Lots of office space and housing was built, but very little of it was at below market rates, and a large segment of the community was left out as a consequence. As the city embarks on the planning process for the Central Redwood City Plan, centering affordable housing at the outset would set a new, more inclusive tone in planning for the future and correct mistakes of the past. I urge you to reconsider the 2300 Broadway project. Thank you.
Thank you, Jordan. Maria Stockton, followed by Lisette Espinosa.
Mazur, Vice Mayor Mazur, I have a question before I begin. Could you answer it for me, please?
Well, we don't really, I can try. What's your question?
I, I just have a person that texts me, she works a second job and they will not give her a break to talk before the city council. What can I tell her to get her voice heard?
She can just send us an email to council@redwoodcity.org.
Thank you so much. I'll tell her.
Of course.
Vice Mayor Mazur, city council members, my name is Maria Stockton, and I am the president of CSEA Redwood City 5, the California School Employees Association, which covers classified employees of the Redwood City School District. We are 350 of the support staff, food service, custodians, office staff, instructional assistants, and all others not considered teachers, administrators, or supervisors. I came to speak to the opportunity of the Redwood City School District to build affordable housing for the staff and faculty. I've worked for over, with the school district for over 40 years and cannot afford to live here myself, but with the help of hip housing and shared housing. I'm sure I won't be one of those benefiting from the plans from this, since I may be retired by the time this project comes to full reality, and I'll be looking for senior housing myself. But I would like to voice the reality of many of the classified employees working in the past, present, and future over the years. We have experienced the rising costs of all of life's needs, including housing here in Redwood City. Classified school employees make much less than our coworker teachers and administrators, most working less than full time, and many have to pay partial or full cost of their benefits such as medical. I have seen many wonderful qualified members move because of unforeseen and rising costs of housing. Member who, many who have left were studying to become teachers to continue to work in our district. Now we have the COVID-19 to deal with and the uncertainty of what's going to happen in Redwood City. To those classified who are presently working in Redwood City School District, and for those coming to work here in the future, the opportunity of possibly having affordable housing for district staff and faculty is an inspiration to them. They can plan on a secure future without the worry of unforeseenable costs of housing going up and pushing them away. Although this project will not be available to all of this district's school, staff and faculty, to those who are selected for the opportunity, it will be a blessing. Thank you.
Thank you Maria. Lisette Espinosa, followed by Suzie Payton.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
Hello. Hi, so I wanted to speak on the mixed use development, including the Wells Fargo and office space, and how it will not benefit a sustainable community in Redwood City. Wells Fargo, the Wells Fargo project will close Spring Street. This will create more traffic downtown, perhaps even for the firefighters at the station on Marshall. And it appears that they will even absorb one of the few city funded green spaces. We should not sell more of our land to private investors and reserve our green space for the community. As well, the 170,000 square feet of office space will further exacerbate gentrification in our community. There's major job housing imbalance, and this, and this office space will harm us further. The pros of creating potential workforce housing does not outweigh these devastating effects. Redwood City can and should provide truly affordable housing. And if we are to do so in a way that is sustainable, long lasting, then the only real option would be through municipal ownership of housing. Please look to invest in projects that balances the ratio of jobs to housing and focus on halting further displacement of marginalized people. This development is likely to move forward and might work in the short term. But in the long term, we have to explore public ownership of housing to keep it truly affordable. Thank you.
Thank you. Suzie Payton, followed by Lee G.
Hello, I take it you can hear me?
Yes, I can.
Okay, hello, my name is Suzie Payton, and I have been involved in community projects in Redwood City for the past 22 years. And most recently, as a member of Arts Redwood City, and I was also a board member on the Redwood City Parks and Arts Foundation for six years. I would like to add to what my friends Cindy Stokes and Ken Mansky have said tonight regarding the Center for Creativity and how it is so important to move forward with this vision as we look to the future of our city and community. As we reshape our downtown with designated spaces, space for families, residents of all ages, and visitors, I hope you will consider our vision of a place that will be a catalyst for creative exploration and community engagement. Our mission is to have a space where artists in all spheres create art, perform art, engage with community, and provide art education, which is much needed with our children, and enrichment. This could be a developer's dream addition to their project. This would be a major destination within our city. The city of Redwood City and all the developers will have willing, passionate, and experienced partners in the Redwood City Arts Redwood City Group and the Redwood City Parks and Arts Foundation to move this vision forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Lee G, followed by Kalisha Webster.
Good evening. I've heard three things over and over tonight, which are equity, housing, and affordable. You get all three and more with the AutoZone project. It provides a teen center plus 60 units of housing, which are 100% affordable for very low and low income, two to three bedroom units. For all those three reasons, I believe that the city planning, or the city should put forth this project for approval. Thank you.
Thank you. Kalisha Webster, followed by Adrian Brandt.
Hello, my name is Kalisha Webster, and I'm a housing coordinator at Housing Choices, working with people with intellectual and developmental disabilities throughout San Mateo County who are looking to live independently. I'm calling in support of the mixed use development at 2300 Broadway and 609 price. As we are all aware, the biggest challenge to finding housing in Redwood City is cost. For people with ADD and families with a child with ADD, many of whom are unable to find or maintain the kind of high wage, full time employment, which is necessary to afford to live independently, this issue is even more pressing. One of my clients, Hannah Redwood City, lived in housing unfit for human habitation for five years before she could afford to move into her own apartment. We were eventually able to help her, but this was only possible after she was able to find a full time job, after many years of searching, and even then, so not have been possible without an emergency mainstream voucher from Housing Authority. However, her story is an option for everyone we serve at Housing Choices. Take for instance, a family I work with, that's been living in transitional housing for the past 10 months, long past the 90 day deadline because the shelter cannot accommodate due to the current pandemic. Once these projections end in a few months, what happens to this family? Living on the streets with a homeless child who has developmental disability and chronic health condition is not a safe option. And what happens to two moms with children with developmental disabilities, that are trying to escape domestic violence, but because their children require constant care, unable to maintain full time employment to live on their own? None of the families have described qualify for the mainstream program, which unlike the moving to work voucher, has no time limit because the person in their household with a disability is under the age of 18. Their only hope for long term independent living is affordable housing. But because of the massive shortage of care in Redwood City and throughout the county to meet the needs of not only these three families, but hundreds of others like them, their options are limited, and many will end up having to leave the communities their children have grown up in. All 609 price cannot single handedly solve this problem. This is a step in the right direction. In addition, this much needed family housing proposed in this project, inclusion of units for true middle income households at this development makes it more accessible to adults with ADD and others on fixed incomes living, looking to live independently. The city must take action to make sure with Redwood City.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you Kalisha. Adrian Brandt, followed by Michael R.
Good evening and thank you. I just wanted to put in a word and a reminder that we need to keep the transit district and grade separation studies on track. These have very long lead times. And since, since COVID has hit, Redwood City has risen to be Caltrain's third most busiest, busiest station. Redwood City is a central hub and linchpin of Caltrain's approved business plans for frequent all day service. Their 2040 business plan envisions sort of BART level service, even nights, weekends, and midday, and increased equity, lower fares, and all of that. So downtown Redwood City and Caltrain have an increasingly symbiotic relationship, where they depend on each other for their sustainability and viability and attractiveness as, as a, as a very livable and sustainable place for businesses and homes and sustainable new developments, including affordable housing to be located. Redwood City is envisioned by Caltrain very essentially at the center of the line with having a new four track station. And so these studies are critical because we need, you know, there's long lead times. We need to understand how all that's going to work together with our grade separations. They're going to be, that station will be critical for facilitating transfers between, and overtakes between express and local trains, as well as planned future California high speed rail trains and possible Dumbarton rail service, which has been delayed due to COVID, but that will still be something that, that will happen, if not sooner than later. It's also critical because we have a lot of developments, such as the AutoZone development, which is contemplating the A1 Party Center rental place as affordable housing, all of that. And Sequoia Station, which is urgent and urgent need of redevelopment, a very tired old shopping center that's very auto oriented that turns its back on downtown. So all those things, okay, thank you.
Thanks Adrian. Okay, Michael R, followed by Noemi Baron. Michael, you need to unmute. There you go. You need to go ahead and unmute. You're briefly unmuted. There you go.
Sorry about that.
No worries.
Good evening, council members. I grew up in Redwood City and went to Sequoia High School, where my younger sister currently attends. Now I work in downtown Redwood City. I've enjoyed seeing the city transform over the years, and the driving reason for this, in my opinion, is development. The recent development projects have brought thousands of employees and residents to our cities, and that has translated into some more vibrant retail and foot traffic. When I was in high school, there wasn't much in the city for us teens to do after school. And we didn't want to go wander downtown because the retail and restaurants weren't that great, and downtown was just pretty dead. We really had nowhere to go and nothing to do. I'm in full support of the 901 El Camino AutoZone project because they're solving a problem that hasn't been addressed with the Redwood City teens. Another reason is the abundance of affordable housing units directed towards local families at the gateway of downtown. 62, three, and four bedroom units would be truly amazing for our city, and I hope you reconsider the initiation of this project. Thank you.
Thank you. Noemi Baron, followed by Ivan Martinez.
Hi, I'm Noemi Baron, and I am a resident of Redwood City. Actually born here in Redwood City, also Sequoia alumni, class of 95. I also just wanted to say I'm in support of the building I'm sorry, I'm Allerton. I'm just, basically, I love the fact that they're low, offering low housing at a low cost and, and I love that they're having their sports. The 601 Allerton is the actual address there. Sorry about that. Getting a little nervous here with speaking.
It's okay.
But yeah, so I'm loving the fact that they're offering affordable housing and the rooftop pickle facility for family and to play with. Actually, when I was growing up, I used to call it, call the town Deadwood City because there was nothing to do when we were growing up, and now there's plenty of stuff. But also, what a nice thing for families to, to play and. when we were growing up and now there's plenty of stuff, but also what a nice thing for um, families to, to play and um, also it's, it's, so anyways, I'm in support of them and I hope that you um, approve.
Thank you. Ivan Martinez followed by Ms. Adler.
Hi, good evening. Ivan Martinez here, also PAL Executive Director. I just wanted to give a huge shout out um, to all of the developers that have been really taking the time and showing some dedication to get to know a lot of the community um, folks and, and leaders really supporting the youth of our community. Um, but a major shout out to uh, Michael Hollow and his entire team, actually with Gloria and Jason in the office. Um, I've gotten to get to know them for these past couple of years and they have uh, shown some extreme dedication to the youth, like I said, um, especially for the kids in our community uh, schools in Redwood City. Um, they've been uh, tremendous support to our organizations and many um, in Redwood City, not just uh, PAL. And uh, I know that they're going to continue to do so, so I'm definitely um, here to shout out uh, premium capital for, for all their support. Thank you.
Thanks, Ivan. Ms. Adler followed by Aneta Menriquez.
Good evening, council members. This is Deborah Adler. I'm actually speaking on behalf of Nicole Adler. She had spoken previously for um, part one and the intent was for her to speak um, in part two. Uh, she's specifically speaking about the project at six oh nine Price. This project includes housing for people at the extremely low income level of affordability. And she heard that the city staff had recommended that the city council reject the project. And when she heard that, she was very heartbroken. And she just wanted everybody to know that um, she does have a housing voucher. She's had it for years. She's been unable to use her housing voucher because there's been no place in Redwood City that currently will take it. There are wait lists for wait lists for wait lists. With so much building downtown, she wants to know, where is my home? People with disabilities want to be more independent and want to be a part of society in the world. We have a very basic need, housing. We need it so badly. I am asking and I am pleading with you to move forward with this project. Many people I am advocating for are not able to attend this meeting and speak for themselves. I should be able to live on my own, make my own decisions and live in my community wherever I want with a support available. I am hoping you can be a part of fulfilling the disability community's dreams and in allowing these units to be built. We all should have the choice and a place to live. Thank you.
Thanks, Deborah, and thanks to Nicole for coming earlier. Aneta followed by Chris Johnson. Go ahead, Aneta. If you're speaking, we cannot hear you, although I see you're unmuted. Why don't we uh, move to Chris and if, Aneta, we can get your sound working, we'll come back to you. So if we get unmute Chris and let him talk and then see if we can get Aneta next.
Good evening, City Council. June eleventh, twenty eighteen, that was the day that the eight fifty-one Main Street Office Project came before council for a general plan amendment because it exceeded the office cap in our downtown precise plan. It's been over two years where we first exceeded the office cap in the DTPP and there were calls for and promises made at that time to reopen, revisit or even sunset the downtown precise plan. While the vision in the DTPP remains the same to this day, implementation strategies must change over the years as conditions on the ground change. So here we are again, two years after the first exception. We're committed to bringing on even more office and mixed-use development without revisiting the downtown precise plan. No jobs housing task force, no revisiting parking minimums, no community outreach on what worked and didn't work with the DTPP. We have developers here this evening with projects based off of painfully outdated research analysis and projections that went into the DTPP over ten years ago. Given this, I ask you to deny the mixed-use and commercial projects before you tonight, but I suspect I may be in the minority on this request. If that is indeed the case, I want to thank City Manager Stevenson Diaz and Director Munzer for drawing a line in the sand. The staff report is clear. There is a price to be paid if we advance more than five total projects this evening. And I don't think our community is willing to pay the price of further delays in the follow-up plan to the DTPP if we go beyond this number. Please don't consider that one will benefit most residents of Redwood City and two, have the most units of workforce or affordable housing at all levels of affordability. Thank you.
Thank you. Aneta, do you want to try again? Can we unmute Aneta? Okay, you're unmuted. Go ahead. I'm sorry, Aneta, we still cannot hear you. I apologize. Um, well, we'll try, um. Oh, Veronica just disappeared, so we'll go to Ashley. Oh, there we go. Um, Ashley Oliver and then Veronica Eskames and we'll try one more time for Aneta after that. And then we're going to um, close the public hearing. Uh, Ashley, can you unmute yourself?
Hello, can everybody hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay. Hi, my name is Ashley Oliver. I have been living in Redwood City for about seven years. I'm calling on the project of twenty-three hundred Broadway and six oh nine Price. Um, I have mainstream housing voucher. And where I was living before I was able to receive it, unfortunately, it was uninhabitable. It had mice and rodents and I lived in a basement and it wasn't really well. So I'm, I'm hoping and asking you to not shut down on the housing vouchers. Thank you.
Thank you, Ashley. Veronica Eskames? Veronica, there you go.
Yeah, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, good evening, everybody. Good evening, uh, council members. Uh, I'm in favor of two projects because uh, will benefit directly to our nonprofits. One is um, the AutoZone in El Camino because it's providing a teen center which uh, everybody should know that it's very necessary to have a place where the kids can uh, I mean, have fun without any other uh, problems. As we know, a lot of um, of our communities live in apartments where there is no space for the teens to be playing. We always work with ki- with kids that when they become a high schoolers, they don't have a place to go. So that's why I support this project and also uh, the one in two twenty-three hundred Broadway because it's gonna provide um, green spaces for, for us and for us uh, for the big events as, as the ones that we do for Day of the Dead, for example, we will have not to pay fees to the city to close the street, which is pretty good for a, for a nonprofit like ours. So I'm in favor of those two projects. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Veronica. Aneta, I think we're going to give you one more shot and then we're going to need to um, go to council discussion. Okay, do you want to try and mute yourself?
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Oh, okay. Thank you so much. Okay.
Sure.
So uh, good evening, everyone, and thank you for allowing me to speak on behalf of my colleagues and myself about this wonderful project. Um, you already know my name. My name is Aneta Menriquez. And I have been working for the Redwood City School District for more than twenty years as an instructional assistant. I'm one of the, one of many Redwood City School District employees that commute every day. Unfortunately, I can't live in the same area that I work in. In my twenty years plus of working for the district, I have reside in the East Bay due to the increased high cost of living in Redwood City. My three children attend the high school in this community. However, they miss out a lot of after-school activities because we needed to go home right away after the school to avoid the heavy traffic, which is usually one to two hours or more than three hours if there is an accident. This is only the commute from the peninsula to the East Bay. For my colleagues that commute from Modesto, Patterson, Stockton and even Sacramento is much longer, therefore more tiresome. While some commute every day, other colleagues have relied on their families and friends in the peninsula to stay with during the week to avoid being tired during this everyday commute. This commute and higher cost of living affect the Redwood City School District employees socially, physically and mentally. Time that could be used accordingly instead of having it wa- wasted sitting in traffic. Perhaps with the construction of this wonderful and affordable project, you will not see a huge difference in traffic, but you will see happier, healthier and more reliable employees and students. So please make it happen. Thank you.
You, Aneta, thanks for sticking with us. All right, with that, unless there's an objection, I'm going to go ahead and close the public hearing and turn to council discussion. Um, we have twenty-three minutes unless we decide to extend the meeting more, but hopefully we'll be able to um, make a decision within this time. So any comments, questions uh, or thoughts from my colleagues on council? I don't see any hands raised. Ah, there we go. Uh, council member ready?
Thank you, Vice Mayor Mazer. Um, yes, I do have a couple of comments. The um, um, the six oh three Jefferson and seven fifty Bradford um, is the Redwood City School District site that has been mentioned several times. The project offers sixty-eight units of workforce housing. The term workforce has always raised a red flag for me. My experience is that developers use this term when they are to build just under market rate housing. Uh, not truly affordable units. Similar to my comment about veterans, if this project is truly to support teachers and staff, teachers are low income. That's ninety-seven thousand dollars, not moderate, a hundred and twenty thousand dollars. So unless there is true clarity about what is being uh, proposed, I'm not a fan. I'm not a fan of affordable housing that is not affordable for the target population. So just wanted to note that. Um, the other comment is the twenty-three hundred Broadway is the Chase Bank site. This office project adds one, two and three bedrooms at the low, very low and extremely low affordability levels. I confess that I was shocked this, uh, this project did not make the staff cut. It is the only project that even offers extremely low units. I have to say that I'm very concerned, as I mentioned before, about the RENA, Regional Housing Needs Allocation Numbers we are about to get from the state. We need to start thinking about those numbers now. Extremely low units are the hardest to build and it won't get any easier. This concern um, led me to consider the affordable housing as I was uh, looking at the standard under which I would consider these projects. For this project to go, um, to go ahead, these housing units are offered at a separate site on Price Street, which is not currently zoned for housing. The developer needs us to support it in this, in this process in order for it to capture the site. I say embrace this opportunity and add the Chase Bank project to the gate, gatekeeper list. The side benefit is that it is an amazing plan that only adds to the courthouse square and what it has become to our community. And finally, making the point that um, uh, regarding the jobs housing imbalance, no one has raised this issue more than me. But to repeat the point that market rate units go vacant, not affordable ones. Affordable ones are desperately needed and we need them as soon, uh, we need them to be considered with these projects. I urge us to make a commitment to this development team and we can figure out how to make it work. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, council member Borgans.
Thank you, uh, Vice Mayor Mazer. I am trying to pull my, okay, so I heard several, several comments tonight um, that I'd like to um, uh, repeat and uh, community-focused benefits, skin in the game. Housing and, and our priorities are housing, transportation, children and youth. And tonight we added equity to everything we do. So I want to make sure that we get the best projects that benefit the most units of either workforce or affordable housing at all levels of affordable, affordable affordability. And I do agree with council member Ready uh, with the word workforce housing. I think we really need to dive into that a little deeper. Um, but we don't get affordable housing without someone paying for it. We have an opportunity before us to leverage quality office uh, and mixed-use projects to to not only fund affordable housing but community benefits. It's amazing that during this economy that we actually have developers that still want to come to our community and build office space. Uh, in this economy, um, that's unbelievable. Uh, but the office space is definitely going to change in its use. So how that looks, we will, we'll see that moving forward. Uh, but we need to get our workers back downtown. Uh, and to get workers, the workers provide the customers for our small businesses. They need to get their customers back. Uh, we prioritize childcare and equity issues like minimum wage. We need to also uh, prioritize the ability of our small, independent business owners to stay in business. And so we have to help provide customers for that to happen. I do agree that some businesses are changing the way they will be activating their space. Um, however, as I said earlier, it's amazing how we have this demand in Redwood City. I do support the comment uh, made about being very sensitive and aware of the great separation and where we are in this process. It is going to be vital to the success of our downtown that we absolutely um, include this in our discussions with any of our development moving forward. Um, I do believe that the needs of the residents far outweigh um, the office space. And so that's why I want to make sure that the projects that we move forward uh, absolutely are at the height of their game when it comes to our strategic priorities and when they meet those. I, I was disappointed that I, that twenty-three hundred Broadway uh, was not one recommended to move forward because I truly felt this had the deepest of affordability. Um, even though it was on Price Street and I do understand that is a a commercial-zoned area that we would have to rezone uh, and do a general plan amendment on that. But I also understand that the legislation moving forward that would have allowed that by right uh, was just short of getting approval because COVID stopped the conversation. That legislation will be brought back and that legislation will end up passing. And if we lose this And if we lose this opportunity to get this site for a hundred percent deep affordable units for our residents, we will lose a huge opportunity. So I definitely don't want us to, uh, to lose that opportunity. I am concerned with the Wells Fargo site with the closure of Spring Street. I do agree that it's a conversation that we need to have. But if you take a big step back from that project and you go to the one oh one Woodside Road interchange, which I know is many years away also, but the plan that was accepted, the design that was accepted, uh, does not provide for a veteran's exit. So people coming from the south that want to get to our downtown would be utilizing Broadway. One of the discussions we did have was that potentially Broadway at Main could be completely closed and for pedestrian use only. That stops one of the ways of getting downtown in a vehicle. The only other way would be to kind of cut through other side streets. So I really want us to, to study what that means when we are giving up a street use for a development project. So I know that will be the devil's in the details, that would be weaned out if this project moves forward. Um, but I, I really want to make sure that the projects we move forward are the ones that best accomplish our strategic initiatives, and that is our housing, our transportation, and our children and youth. And equity overrides all of that. So as we move forward with these, I would, um, I would be supporting either not moving forward with the Wells Fargo site or including twenty-three hundred Broadway into this conversation. I also would be supporting the AutoZone site because it does provide space for our youth, and we heard that from several speakers tonight. Our children need to be recognized. We talk about not having places for them, and it's teens are our youth also. So it is, it's a conversation I'd like to hear from my other colleagues. And I will, um, stop there and wait until I hear what everybody else has to say. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, council member Borgans. Uh, John Baker had his hand up, the superintendent for Redwood City School District. I just wanted to give him a chance to respond to the, um, issue of the affordability. Go ahead, John.
Yes, thank you, Shelley, um, Vice Mayor Mazur and council members. I just want to make sure that everybody is aware that, you know, the Redwood City School District is really committed to providing the low market rate rent for our teachers and our staff. When I look at the AMI, many of our teachers and our staff members have income levels that are extremely low, very low and low. And it's the board's intention that those market rates are below, when we, um, rent these apartments out, that it be below market rent. There's no use in us doing it otherwise because we need to maintain and attract staff to work here within Redwood City and also to become part of the community in which where they work. So I just wanted to give a clarification on that. We are dedicated and committed to make sure that the rate of rent that we are going to charge is below market rate. Thank you, Shelley.
Thank you. Thanks, John. Um, okay, colleagues. Uh, council member Aguirre.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. You know, I want to thank everyone that's been on this call and all of our partner developers that have been working with us to make this happen. But you know, as a professor at Kenyatta College, it'll be a while before I can make a si- six-digit figure. And I re- really respect the, my colleagues that want to do, um, housing for professors and teachers and so on. We have this at Kenyatta, we have this at other, um, community college districts, and I think we need to have this at the elementary school district. This is very important. We can compare ourselves to teachers, to, uh, I'm sorry, to nurses and to firefighters and policemen because the salaries are very different. And so I really want to make a point of how important it is to have, um, housing for how, for staff and faculty and, and, and teachers in our elementary school district. I was on the school board and to me, that's very, very important. And I want to make sure that we look at that as one of the projects that's important to us and as we move forward.
Thank you. Um, John Fong, did you have, uh, something you felt like you needed to respond to?
Yes, I just wanted to clarify because I think we're talking about twenty-three hundred Broadway being the only project with extremely low income housing. Um, it, when we put in the Broadway piece, I don't think those details were put in about our affordability, but two-thirds of our homes will be at thirty percent or fifty percent AMI levels, which is extremely low and very low income levels.
Okay, thank you so much for that clarification. Uh, council member Bain.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. I, um, I'm sensitive, uh, with the hour here and I want to find a path for us to move forward. I will say that first of all, I'm extremely aware of our staff limitations and understand the reason why staff put forth the recommendation as written. Uh, I will say that, uh, I think the idea that we have to choose between a visioning process with the Central Redwood City Plan and a series of projects is a false choice. Uh, as many people listening to this call know, I have been pushing for a visioning process for at least the last five years. And it's, it's a bit, um, disappointing to me personally that we do not already have a vision in place for the next phase of Redwood City. And I hope that the Central Redwood City, uh, plan moves forward. But, uh, if we're talking about outsourcing versus planning staff, uh, I think visioning and planning are two different sets of skills. And what we need to do for the next phase of growth in Redwood City is, uh, uh, have a visioning process, the same as we did for Courthouse Plaza, the same as we did for the Downtown Precise Plan, and the same as we did for the General Plan Update in twenty-ten. All of those, uh, processes were many, many years ago. And, uh, as one of the speakers said, uh, we're working off, uh, some visions that are a bit out of date and they're not up to speed with where we are in the world today. And of course, where we are in the world today changes on a daily basis. I do believe that we will get back to a point where people are using public transportation. I do believe that we will get back to a point where people are working in office buildings, albeit probably at a, a lesser capacity than they did pre-COVID. Uh, but we need to think about the future as we evaluate these projects. So the gatekeeper process, as I understand it, was designed to give us a mechanism to say no to projects. Instead of processing everything that comes through our door, uh, we can say, you know, this project has more community benefits than this other project does. Or, you know, this project doesn't have enough community benefits. I, I don't think that, um, especially the folks who are newer to the conversation, realize just how far we have advanced the la- the conversation in the last few years. All of the projects that are, uh, in the mixed-use category, uh, would have come to us as office projects in the past. And because of the council's, uh, pushing and the council's firm stance on the need for housing, especially below-market housing, these have all now come back to us as mixed-use projects. In addition to that, uh, several of the projects are offering, uh, a, a really interesting and compelling community benefits. And if I look at it from the community benefit standpoint, the two that's, that, that spring to the top for me are the, uh, the Tishman Spire site with Hamilton Green and the Redwood Grove, and the AutoZone site, uh, with the Chrysanthemum Plaza and the, the youth center. Uh, even if we don't have the resources to staff the youth center in the foreseeable future, that is a benefit that we will need going forward. So, um, I, I'm, uh, concerned about the staff recommendation of, uh, the two projects. Uh, I think, uh, I, I'm, I'm supportive of the RCSD Sobrato project. I'd like to see that going forward. I think the, the Lane project at, uh, Main Street needs more discussion, uh, particularly when it comes to the configuration of the plaza and whether or not the city wants to, uh, sell the parcel where the park is, the park, the parklet, excuse me, and close Spring Street. That needs further discussion. Um, I think that the, um, the project on Allerton has some interesting, uh, benefits. I've been a big proponent of, uh, family-oriented, uh, recreation, but I think that that, uh, needs more discussion, particularly when it comes to the affordable housing piece and how that's going to be addressed. And so what I would suggest as a path forward is that, uh, we advance three projects to the initiation stage, and we continue, uh, two projects, uh, for a period of six months. And, and we can talk about what, uh, uh, an appropriate timeline is for those. But, uh, we're in a, a position now that, um, I never wanted us to be in, which is the proposals are advancing the vision as opposed to aligning with the vision that we've already discussed with the community. Uh, I do think that, uh, all of the proposals have elements of where we want to go collectively as a community, and I don't want to end those conversations. Uh, so I'd like to figure out a way that we can, um, advance certain projects, uh, continue certain projects for further refinement, but not outright deny them and make them wait for a period of two years. So, uh, those are my thoughts right now.
Thank you, council member. Um, it's eleven twenty-seven. Can I have a motion to continue the meeting to eleven forty-five? Can we wrap it up in fifteen minutes?
Move, ready?
Janet? This, is there a second?
Yeah.
Hale?
Second, Janet.
Oh, okay.
Pam, can we do? Yes, we do need to take a whole vote. Um, council member Bain.
Sure.
Council member Borgans. Is that a yes? Council member Hale.
Yeah, she said yes, Pam.
Okay, council member Ready.
Yes.
Council member Aguirre.
Yeah.
And Vice Mayor Mazur.
Yes, I'm going to try and muster a little more enthusiasm in my colleagues. Ian, hopefully we'll be done before your birthday is over. Um, we're, is, are the, are you finished with your comments?
Who, me?
Yes.
Um, well, I'm not sure I agree with that last comment, but we'll see where it goes.
Uh, okay, um, so council member Hale, what's next?
Thank you. For the sake of time, I'm just going to say ditto to, uh, council member Bain's proposal. Um, here's the issue I have with how the process was run this evening, is that I had structured, um, my thoughts on it, and I gathered from some of my colleagues, they similarly had to look at the overall picture. And what we've done effectively is we've advanced a lot of market rate housing, and now we're finding ourselves in the situation of having to bait this fantastic affordable housing. And I, I will bore you all with some stats, but, you know, I did pull up our RENA numbers. And to just give you a sense of how significant this is, in the last entire cycle of RENA, we achieved only twenty-seven percent of our affordable housing goals, which was three hundred and twelve new units. Tonight, on the table is three hundred and forty-one units of affordable housing, which would effectively be somewhere between seventeen and twenty percent of our anticipated RENA goal, dependent on where the Jefferson site lands in terms of affordable. This is significant in terms of our goals, and they aren't just our goals, these are our community's goals. These are our goals because they are your goals. And it's important that we achieve them because this is, this is how we make equity real in Redwood City, by giving everybody a place, uh, at the table, and that, that means housing. So, um, I, I'd love to see us, um, take a concept, uh, like what, uh, council member Bain, earlier councilwoman Aguirre advanced, which is we're, I think what staff should be hearing is we're not comfortable waiting two years. Some of these are, um, not as well-formed, but there is a there there, and we want to see them, uh, potentially, you know, take bloom. I would agree with council member Bain on the three to advance. I won't state the reasons why, they've all been stated, they're good reasons. Um, and I'd love to see us take up, uh, the idea that Mr. Sears put up, which is to help with the visioning process. Um, why wouldn't we go to the developers and ask them for, uh, the resources, uh, to do this? So, um, I would be satisfied, uh, this evening with that, but only if we're going to revisit those because, uh, those two projects are a significant amount of the affordable housing. And I did have one quick question, uh, for Mr. Fong, which is I thought at one point I'd heard you also say four-bedroom units. Could you confirm that or deny it?
Yes, we have four-bedroom units as well, so two, three, and four-bedroom units.
That's, that's just amazing. So, um, I, I'm, I'm eager to see these projects, uh, move forward. And I actually think there's great power in studying them together because that's where we can get some real elegant planning. We can look at how we're balancing across streets and in an entire, uh, neighborhood. And, um, so I'm eager for, as well, to echo council member Bain, the true visioning to begin. I think that's really important.
Thank you. Council member Aguirre.
Just to reiterate, I think that six months is what we need to move forward with. I don't think we need to wait for two years because it's too long to move these things forward. And I agree with council member Hale that this is important and we need to move forward with it so we can get our folks moving into our housing and actually build housing for our teachers. That's so important. So that's important to me as a professor, and I know the struggle, and I know, also know how valuable we have housing at the community college district. So I want to make sure that we move this forward. And I hear our developers really actually, um, embracing this. So that's what I'm proposing.
Okay, uh, any other comments from my colleagues? Um, I will be super brief and then I'll see if we can figure out a motion. I want to thank everybody for their creative thinking. I want to thank everybody who came and spoke, um, and to our staff for working on this and giving us something to react to. Um, I, I fully support the idea of moving the three projects proposed by council member Bain forward. Um, I think they each offer unique, um, benefits to the city and advance our priorities. And I, and I also agree that the other two projects should be reviewed in a much shorter timeframe, um, give them a chance to do some refining and have some further questions asked, and then, um, hopefully come back with, um, successful proposals. So with that, um, I think we had, um, staff had prepared individual resolutions for each project. Is that correct? Am I, am I correct on that?
That's correct, Vice Mayor.
Okay, so we could, um, have a motion for each of the three proposed projects, and then we can take the other two separately, um, so that we can make the, um, shift in the language. Does, does that work?
This is, um, Veronica, your city attorney, and I actually, based on what I'm hearing from, um, all of the council members, I think the better course of action, yes, as to the three that you're looking at moving, you can move them all in one motion and adopt the resolutions initiating them. So that's definitely something that can be done. As to the other two, really, it sounds like you're not interested in denying initiation and instead would like to reconsider them or, you know, ask them to kind of revisit their projects and come back to you in six months. So I don't think that you need a motion, um, or any resolution to be adopted.
Oh, okay. So if we don't take action, that in effect then allows them a little bit more time to come back?
Correct.
Okay. All right, so I guess I would ask for a motion, um, on the projects I've heard. Uh, council member Bain, did you want to make a motion?
I would. Thank you, Vice Mayor Mazur. I will, um, move that we advance the three projects, the RCSD Sobrato project, the AutoZone project, and the, uh, Tishman Spire, uh, project. And I'm sure the city attorney or someone else will put in the exact addresses of those projects, um, in, in terms of the initiation project. In in terms of the initiation project process, excuse me. I'm a bit tired. I don't do not want to deny the other projects. I want them to continue discussions and come back to the council. After further refinement, I think we have provided some direction on where those discussions can go. But just to put a finer point on it. I think that there needs to be further discussion on whether or not to close Spring Street. And sell the the Triangular Park over there on Marshall and Spring and. And I think with the, that's with the Lane Project and the, excuse me, the Allerton Project. I think there needs to be further discussion about the affordable housing. Piece and the ratios and how much of that will be devoted to families. And I I would like to see those come back to us sooner rather than later. And I will just add my opinion that the piece that is best outsourced is the visioning piece. So the Central Redwood City Plan, the Downtown Transit Station, I understand those may be very interesting projects for our staff to work on. But I think there are some very qualified consultants and I know Mayor Howard is not part of this conversation. But consultants were critical in the process of defining Courthouse Plaza. And the other, the Downtown Precise Plan and other visioning processes that I've mentioned in the past. So that that is the motion and those are my comments.
Thank you. And did I hear a second from Councilmember Ready?
Yes, second.
Okay, thank you. Before I take a vote. Mr. Runzer, did you have a comment you wanted to make?
Yeah, thank you, Vice Mayor. Please go ahead with the vote. I just wanted to note to Councilmember Bain's comments, we do have consultants. On board that will assist city staff on both the Transit District and Central Redwood City, so just for clarification.
Okay, great, thank you. Okay, unless there's further discussion, I'll call for a vote.
Okay, let's start with Councilmember Borgans.
Yes.
Councilmember Hale. Councilmember Hale, okay, Councilmember Ready.
Yes.
Councilmember Aguirre.
Yes.
Councilmember Bain.
Yes.
And Vice Mayor Mazur.
Yes.
The motion passes with six votes. Mayor Howard is recused.
Okay. With that. I will thank everybody for sticking with us so late into the evening and thank you to my colleagues for creative thinking. Um, since we have no other items to discuss tonight. I will adjourn the meeting. I see that Mayor Howard was going to adjourn in memory of June Burry.
You can't speak?
Okay, Melissa, did you want to say something?
I I'm sorry, yes, the mayor had returned to the room and I think she had planned to adjourn in honor of Ms. Burry. She is being readmitted to Zoom. If you could just give her one moment, I think she might do that.
Okay, okay.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Oh, thank you. Thank you very, very much, Vice Mayor Mazur. Thank you so much for handling that meeting. I appreciate it very much. Item nine, we're going to defer the reports until our meeting of ten twenty six. And we will be adjourning in memory of a very dear friend. Her name is June Marion McMullinbury. June Marion McMullinbury, fondly known by family and friends as Junebug. Passed away peacefully surrounded by the presence of family and friends. Encircled by the love that she inspired to her nearly one hundred years of life. June is survived by her four loving children, Susan Burry, Robert Burry Jr., Judy Burry, Alessandri and Patricia Burry. Grandchildren Angela, Kate, Elizabeth, Megan, Margaret, Marin, JJ and Anya. And great grandchildren Sophia, Audrey, Mia, Theodore and Calvin. And their beloved eighty five year old tortoise, Flower. June was often asked the secret to a long and happy life. She had the same answer every time, love, memories and laughter. She followed her own advice, creating a lifetime of love, laughter and wonderful memories for four generations of family. Born to parents Alan and Maggie McMullin in nineteen twenty, the very year that women gained the right to vote. June was a lifelong Democrat, progressive and believer in human rights. June graduated early from Lowell High School at the age of sixteen. And went on to attend San Francisco State Teachers College. And when she was in line to register for college classes, she met Robert Bob Burry. After graduation, June and Bob married and she was proud to have been one of the first married women to teach in San Francisco. Proud members of the greatest generation, June supported the World War Two effort by driving a limousine from Matson Shipping Line. And later staying home, taking care of her young family while Bob served in the Pacific in the US Navy. In the early years after the war, June and Bob moved around the Monterey Peninsula before finally settling in Redwood City in nineteen fifty three. Where Bob and a business partner opened Burry Vanham Tire, the family business that would firmly root them in the Redwood City community. When Bob decided to run for Redwood City Council in the nineteen sixties, June became his campaign treasurer. In his political career, as in all things, Junebug was ever the wind beneath Bob's wings. Supporting him through over twenty years on the Redwood City Council and through two terms as mayor from nineteen sixty eight to nineteen seventy two. June passed away only a day before what would have been her seventy eighth wedding anniversary with Bob. June had a sharp and active mind from youth until the day she passed away. She was a creative soul, artist, avid reader, student of several languages. And master of even the most difficult crossword puzzles in pen. She enjoyed broad interests such as impressionist art, British crime drama, tea time, cooking, reading and calligraphy. Her two main loves after family were chocolate and adventure. She passed her love for adventure on to her family. Cherished memories of family vacations were a source of joy throughout her life. June and Bob traveled all over the world and to all fifty states. June Burry had the ultimate zest for life, a warm presence that lit up every room, an amazing sense of humor. Though she will be greatly missed by her family and friends, all who knew her will take her life lesson to heart. Love, create memories and laugh every day. Kino's Home and Training Center is a nonprofit organization that has long been dear to June's heart. Memorial donations can be mailed to Kino's Home and Training Center. At three six three one Jefferson Avenue, Redwood City, nine four zero six two. June, we will all miss you and we'd like to adjourn in your memory. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Thank you all very much. We will meet again at our next meeting, October twenty sixth, twenty twenty. Everyone be safe. Good night now.